...to order, and I should tell my colleagues that Mayor Holman is homesick this evening, so I will be acting in your stead tonight. If a clerk would call the roll.
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Mayor Holman. Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Scharf. Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wolbach. Six present.
First item on tonight's agenda is a presentation of a proclamation to exchange students from Tsuchura, Japan, and presentation of Matt Schlegel, marathon runner. So let me start by giving a warm welcome to all the students visiting, and it's an honor and a pleasure to have you at our meeting tonight. Now, I believe there is someone from JLS who could step up and introduce.
I think it's Diana, Greg, who could come forward.
Diana.
Or someone else.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. I would like to introduce both our JLS and Jordan Middle School students along with the students visiting from Sutsuera, Japan.
Please, yes.
In the past, we've had a photo opportunity, but I don't, I believe that would be later.
Yes, I think at the end, we can all gather together. But it would be good if you could introduce the students to start with, and we can have a welcome for them.
Japanese students, would you please scan to?
Yeah, each year, we have visitors from, students from Tsuchura here, and it's always a pleasure to see them and hope that they have a great and wonderful week here in Palo Alto.
And would you like me to introduce Matt Schlegel, the marathon runner?
Yes.
Okay, Matt, I can introduce you, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank Mayor Holman, Vice Mayor Schmidt, and the City Council for this opportunity. I'm both honored and proud to be representing Palo Alto in the Kasumi Gauro Marathon in our sister city of Tsuchura, Japan. Also, I would like to thank Neighbors Abroad for nominating me for the, for this opportunity. I'm so grateful for Neighbors Abroad, not only for the nomination, but also for their sponsorship of the student exchange program. Both my daughters participated, and now my son is participating in the program. I served as a parent chaperone last year, and I plan on chaperoning again this year. We are delighted to be a part of this wonderful program. And now I'd like to say a few words in Japanese to our friends in Sutsuera, who I understand are watching us on the video feed. Thanks again to everyone, and I'm looking forward to seeing our friends in Sutsuera soon.
Could you tell us a word about the marathon?
Oh, yes. So the marathon is, so the marathon is on April 19th, so I'll be traveling there to participate. My understanding is I'll be arriving on the Thursday beforehand, and, and we'll have several events leading up to the marathon where I'll be meeting with people at the city and also at the schools. And, and then I understand there will be a going away event after the marathon, so I'm really looking forward to this.
If you're feeling good, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll be feeling just fine by then.
Well, thank, thank you very much for representing Palo Alto, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm Jennifer Buonrostro. I'm co-chairing the Neighbors Abroad seat with Diana, and so I just wanted to, first of all, I'd like to also introduce Sato-san. He is the Sutsuera City representative who's here with us, and he would, he would like to say a few words. But before I do that, I would like to just introduce all the students by name and their host family, if that's okay.
Great, yes.
So when I, when I call your name, would you please stand up with your host student, okay? Irene Majeski and Yumiko Onuma, okay? Second is Tina Lagerblad and Naoka Sato. Dahlia Van Zyle and Mizuho Kumei. Wendy Sakuma and Hina Togo. Tricia Razdan and Miyuu Utsugi. Nicole Lee and Yuko Taki. And Vera Wu and Akane Sakamoto. Kathy Liu and Mommy Ozeki. Chloe Chang and Kanon Kurakawa. And Sarah, Sarah McCaffey, thank you. Andrea, oh, Vivian Nguyen and Runa Hirasi. And Vivian is not here, yeah. Andres Benilla and Ryusi Tirui. Andres here? Okay, they're not here. Dean Casey and Kaiske Katsumura. Riley Sang and Takumi Sato. Jordan Green and Rio Takahashi. Connor Bowdre and Shumo Nimota, Nomoto, excuse me. Nicholas Schlegel and Suñia Tanaka. Okay, and we have some other host students, Sophia Majeski, Sarah McGuffey, and Kelly Lim, who are helping us with taking the students around the middle school because some of the students are staying with high schoolers this year. So, anyway, I would like to introduce now Sato-san.
Please.
Itzuo Sato from Sutsuera City.
Thanks for introducing me. Good evening, everyone. I am Itzuo Sato from Sutsuera City. On behalf of all of us, I would like to appreciate inviting sixteen junior high school students to the Palo Alto City Council. I am very appreciative of your constant welcome. We are honored to be here today. Now, we are staying in Palo Alto for the student exchange program, which has lasted over twenty years between Palo Alto and Sutsuera. This program would not have succeeded over the years without longstanding efforts by participants of Neighbors Abroad. Especially former Vice President, Ms. Keikun Nakajima, made every effort to develop not only this program, but exchange events in every occasion. Here, I would like to pay our respects and gratitude to her. Now, Ms. Nakajima has retired, Ms. Jennifer Buonrostro takes over her works as a Vice President. Her great works are leading us higher motivation for the exchange. Last September, you held Japan's Tsuchura Festival. I appreciate that you had people of Tsuchura here and gave them heartwarming hospitality. And this April, just one month later, we will have a guest winner from Palo Alto who will international marathon race in Tsuchura. We have more opportunity to exchange in both cities these days, and it makes me feel very When Japan suffers the big earthquake, we had a lot of sincere donations from people of Palo Alto. It has been four years since then, but we have always kept you sort of in mind. It has supported people of Tsuchura emotionally, and we feel that our ties have got closer. We, Sutsuera, look forward to developing understanding and exchange opportunities between two cities in the future. Before I close my words, I would like to express my appreciation again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council members who would like to make a comment? Councilmember Niss.
Well, I had the very distinct honor of being able to greet the students literally as they came off the bus and off the flight on Saturday afternoon. I don't know what they have done since then, but I know that included in their itinerary for this week is a trip to Yosemite and an overnight stay, and also a real tour of San Francisco. They're only here for a week. I know that they are being feted by their host families, and I want to indicate, I think, for all of us how proud we are of the host families, and how delighted we'll be when the students here actually go back to Japan for two weeks this summer at the end of the school year. So, welcome to all of you again. It's wonderful to see you, and so far, so good. Are you, if you, I know not everyone speaks English, but so far, are you really enjoying the experience?
Yes.
The answer is yes, right, good, good. Thank you all for being here tonight, and welcome to Palo Alto.
Standing in for the mayor, let me read a proclamation of the City of Palo Alto welcoming exchange students from Tsuchura City, Ibaraki, Japan. Whereas, exchange programs within middle schools and the sister city program are the foundation of the sister city program in order to promote international and intercultural understanding amongst youth. And whereas the cities of Palo Alto, California, and Sutsuera City, Ibaraki, Japan, have worked together to involve their respective middle school students and their families in educational and cultural exchanges that involve special programs. And whereas the opportunity to host Tsuchura students in Palo Alto and to send Palo Alto students to Sutsuera has proven to be a mutually beneficial relationship. And whereas the City of Palo Alto thanks Sutsuera City for their generosity and hospitality aimed toward young people for the last nineteen years. Now, therefore, the Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim our heartfelt welcome and record of congratulations to Mr. Itzuo Sato, Ms. Kimioko Kikuchi, and their sixteen students. I'd like to present this to the representative. And if all the students would like to come up and have their picture taken with the city council.
Oh, wait, did we say all girls on that side and all boys on that side? Torture, torture. Don't want to get accused of fraternizing.
Picture, picture takers.
All right, everybody look slightly, please. One more. There we go.
All right, yeah.
Welcome, Corey. Karen is sick tonight, so. Pat, I have a light on for you. Did you want to? Okay, if we could turn to item number, second item on the agenda, which is agenda changes. Now, I believe that there has been some discussion, and item number nine, the closed session item on real property negotiations, has been or will be asked to be postponed. Does staff have a date that?
We do not yet, Mr. Vice Mayor. It will be, would be sometime in the April, on the April meeting schedule.
Okay, I guess we've been looking forward to such a discussion, so look forward to having that scheduled as soon as possible. Any other items for agenda changes? Let's then move to city manager comments. Excuse me? Oh, yes, I guess we do. So is there someone who would like to move that?
I will move item nine, be postponed to a date to be determined.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Burt, second by Councilmember Niss. Any discussion? All in favor? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, if we can move on then to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Couple things to report, just a nice little bit of news here. Just last week, several of our electric utility technicians visited the Fair Meadow Elementary School to help educate fourth grade students about our electric utility and safety, and technicians Louis Uribe, Tim Dominiques, and Stanton Spear used a miniature model of a home powered with live electricity and props to demonstrate the dangers of coming in contact with live electric wires. Students learned a lot about safety, how to call underground service alert, and et cetera. And again, just thanks to our staff for reaching out in that regard. And household leaks in the United States can waste more than one trillion gallons of water each year, with the drought in its fourth year here in California. We're especially mindful of the U.S. EPA sponsorship of an annual campaign to encourage people to hunt down drips during Fix a Leak Week, March 16th through 20th. So this week, our utilities department will send daily reminders and helpful tips to the Palo Alto community about repairing leaky toilets, faucets, showers, and irrigation systems. And Palo Alto residents can take advantage of free conservation devices, home water surveys, and rebates to assist with improving water use efficiency. So resources are available at cityofpaloalto.org/water. And lastly, I would just bring to the council as a whole's attention that the Vice Mayor has a special proclamation this evening to honor Ray Baketti. Mr. Baketti is too ill to be here this evening, but I did want to turn this back over to, to the council and the Vice Mayor for this recognition and proclamation. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, we have proclamation, and I've asked Councilmember Niss to read it.
So this proclamation is for Ray Baketti tonight, and Ray, I hope you're watching and, and at home, or Carol. This is a very thoughtful and important proclamation. Ray has made a big difference in our city. Many of you, I know, have served with Ray on a variety of different committees. So this is a proclamation from the city and signed by Karen Holman, the mayor. Whereas Ray Baketti is an active member and volunteer in the Palo Alto community and has for many years been so, he supports issues ranging from education, human relations, civic engagement and participation, senior services, train safety, and police services. And whereas Mr. Baketti has volunteered for the Palo Alto Police Department, and I noticed Dennis is here tonight, for nine years, supporting the department's efforts to maintain a safe and welcoming community, and served also on the Public Safety Building Blue Ribbon Task Force. Whereas Ray served on the leadership team of Project Safety Net and contributed his time as a track watch volunteer to help protect those near rail crossings and assist those in crisis near the tracks. His additional contributions to the city include six years on the Human Relations Commission, including terms as vice chair and chair, also served as co-chair of the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, which I know Mark Urban also served on, leading to recommendations that have transformed our investment in infrastructure. Ray Baketti has also been a board member at Channing House and an active member of Palo Alton's for Government Effectiveness, the group known as PAGE. Whereas he served on the school board of Palo Alto and is a trustee at the Foothill Community College. He also has received numerous awards recognizing his contributions to the community, including the Stanford Cuthbertson Award in 1982, the Avenidas Lifetimes of Achievement Award in '09, and just last year, the year before, he got the Chamber of Commerce Tall Trees Award for Outstanding Citizen Volunteer. Whereas in presenting the Stanford Cuthbertson Award in '82, President Donald Kennedy recognized Ray for his, quote, relentless energy and unstinting integrity, and for the time he manages to be a teacher, friend, and quiet healer, a role in which he has over nearly two decades, created a legion of secret beneficiaries. Therefore, I, reading for Karen Holman, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim appreciation to Ray Baketti for his years of making Palo Alto the wonderful community it is today and his embodiment, embodiment of the highest ideals of citizenship. So thank you, Acting Mayor, for letting me read this. I have known Ray for many years. He is, just as this says, an incredible and outstanding volunteer, and has made a big difference in, in Palo Alto. And I'm sure others here will want to speak as well, to Ray's commitment.
Yeah, I'd just like to add my word for Ray, as he's an ideal citizen in bringing a wealth of experience and knowledge from his own work into the city, both on the educational side and the city side, in a variety of boards, commissions, volunteer, help and aid for the city. He's done so much for us, and we wish Ray the best, and we look forward to seeing him with us soon. Councilmember Phil Seth. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Berman.
Well, as Councilmember Niss mentioned, I had the pleasure and privilege of serving with Ray on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, which was the first time I met him about five years ago. And although I haven't known him for as long as many have, there are countless stories I could tell. But I think my favorite is one that I told to the Human Relations Commission at their meeting last week where they also recognized Ray's service on the HRC, where it was my campaign in 2012. And at that time, Mayor Yaweh Yeh invited me to come out and do track watch with him. And Yaweh said, "Meet me at," I think it was Meadow and the Caltrain tracks, at about 10 o'clock at night. And so I showed up to Meadow, the Meadow Crossing, and I see this hat. And I immediately realized, wait, that's not Yaweh, it's Ray Baqueti. And I say, "Ray, what are you doing here?" And Ray said, "This is my 84th time doing track watch. What are you doing here?" And I said, "Well, I'm here to meet Yaweh." And he said, "Oh, Yaweh's at Charleston. He's not here." And so I went up and, but, you know, I knew Ray had done Ibric, I knew Ray had been on the School Board, I knew Ray was involved in the Police Department. But there were countless things that he did for the community that went unseen by the rest of us. And he's an incredible role model for the rest of us. And I'm very thankful for all the work that he's done for Palo Alto.
Thank you. Councilmember Bird.
Yes, I'd just like to echo that Ray has just been a tireless contributor to the community. And one of his overriding themes has been adherence to the common good. And while not everyone's notion of what that means is identical, it's a really important reminder that we should just continue to reflect on our actions and our, not only as officials, but as a community, to think about our common good. And we owe Ray for that and many other things.
Yes, we're all indebted to Ray. Thank you. Chief Burns.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I also want to thank you for the proclamation, which I think really well summarizes and recognizes Ray for his tireless service to our community. You know, I think it captures his personality, his service, all of his accomplishments, and his spirit, which I am fortunate, I'm fortunate to say that I think I'm a member of the Secret Legion of Beneficiaries. And I was very fortunate to work with him for nine years. As he was a, as he was a volunteer about five years ago, we lost our volunteer coordinator through some cutbacks. But that did not deter Ray, nor did it deter George Brown. And they continued to come to work and twice a week and did an amazing job, frequently described as the hardest working employees in the police department. And we cannot thank Ray enough for everything he did on all the different subjects, even as much as just getting to know our younger officers and explaining what the community wants and needs and how we can serve better. So I just want to say thank you again for recognizing him. He's a man of tremendous wisdom, humor, and compassion. And we are all better because of Ray Baqueti. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brings us to oral communications. I have three cards. Each have three minutes to speak. First one is William Conlin. I don't think a proclamation, a resolution. Is that right, Molly? We don't need a vote on a proclamation? Sorry, William Conlin.
Does the light go on? No?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I have a letter here, but it's a matter I think is of some urgency. And so I wanted to read it to you this evening, rather than have it wait a few weeks. And this is addressed to the mayor and city council. "The alarming number of youth suicides in our community is a matter demanding the attention of the city council and indeed, all citizens of Palo Alto, in addition to our school board. Whatever has caused this suicide epidemic in our community, it is imperative that we take immediate action to protect our students. I use the term epidemic deliberately because if the same number of teens in our community had died from cancer or an infectious disease, we would approach this matter as a matter of public health. Certainly, it's appropriate and necessary to increase counseling services aimed at students and to take measures to reduce opportunities to use Caltrain for suicide attempts. But because we don't know which students are most at risk, or why they are at risk, I believe that a public health-type approach is warranted. Last Thursday, I attended a meeting with board members and staff from Family and Children Services of Silicon Valley, at which this matter was discussed. I was shocked to hear a parent state that many students in Palo Alto schools may only sleep five hours per night. My shock was because I know professionally the impact of sleep deprivation in industrial settings, where impaired judgment and performance can cause injury, death, and disaster. Let me cite a few of the consequences of sleep deprivation from the National Institutes of Medicine publication, Sleep Disorders and Sleep Deprivation: An Unmet Public Health Problem. Quote, "The public health consequences of sleep loss and sleep-related disorders are far from benign. The most visible consequences are errors in judgment. Less visible consequences of sleep conditions are far more prevalent, and they take a toll on nearly every indicator of public health: mortality, morbidity, performance, accidents and injuries, functioning, and quality of life, family well-being, and healthcare utilization." So I see my time is running short.
One minute.
Right. So I want to state that it is clear that sleep deprivation could be a common factor in the Palo Alto suicide epidemic. The good news is that we can implement measures to reduce the risk of anxiety, depression, and poor judgment that may be critical factors in suicide attempts. And by actively paying attention to the sleep patterns of our children, we may be able to identify at-risk teens in order to take timely and effective action. Citing this report again, actually, I'm going to go right to what I would like you to do. "I would like the council to take leadership in alerting all parents to the vital importance of adequate sleep to assure the health and well-being of their children and to ask parents to monitor their children's sleep, and to implement measures to assess the quantity and quality of sleep, perhaps by questionnaires or an app, by parental observation and reporting, or by working with experts to implement in-school alertness testing to identify those who may be troubled or overworked." Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Next speaker is Eamon Gormley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Eamon Gormley. I'm a volunteer with Transform, the advocacy group. And tonight's topic is economics, the much-maligned dismal science which deals with how society rations its limited resources. Buyers want low prices, sellers want high prices. And in a free-market economy, we let the buyers and the sellers figure out the pricing between them, like our friends here from Monty Python. And the forces of supply and demand determine how society rations its resources. Now, some people once tried a different system. And in the Soviet system, in the interest of equality, everything had to be affordable. So prices were kept artificially low. Sellers were running at a loss, and they were given subsidies to compensate for their losses. So demand soon outstripped supply. Currency became worthless, and there was a shortage of everything. But they still needed a mechanism for rationing their limited resources. So instead of using pricing, they came up with this ingenious system: queuing. You queued up outside the store before it opened or before a delivery came in. And if you were lucky, you'd get some groceries. Meanwhile, the subsidies engulfed over half the Soviet economy. And we all know what happened. Eventually, the system collapsed. Now, I hope we're never going to try anything silly as rationing by queuing in this more enlightened country. But we kind of do when it comes to roads which are a limited resource, heavily subsidized, and they're not rationed by pricing. So apart from a few places like the I-680 Express Lane, roads are given away below market value. Costs hardly anything to use it, whether it's at 4:00 in the morning or during the commute. And during the commute, supply doesn't keep up with demand. So we ration it using the Soviet queuing system. So how do we get traffic moving? Well, here's one person who tried the old solution of road widening, someone who needs no introduction. Seen here opening the M-25, which was a 116-mile motorway surrounding London. And her government bragged about doubling spending on roads in what she called "the biggest road-building program in Britain since the Romans". And just before the M-25 was opened, everybody predicted that it would be the end of congestion in London and finally would have all this extra capacity and finally traffic will get moving. Did it work? Oh, contraire. From day one, it was jammed solid with traffic, and it's been jammed ever since. And the newspapers called it "the world's longest parking lot". And to this day, it's a textbook example of what we call induced demand. And there's plenty more examples like it locally in the Bay Area. When you sell a limited resource that's in high-end demand, below its market value, you will never be able to keep up with demand. You can try widening roads all you want, but people simply adjust their behavior to take advantage of the extra capacity. They'll travel at peak time, or in a lot of cases, they'll buy a house farther away to take advantage of lower property prices. Traffic on a road is not like water in a pipe. It doesn't flow faster when you widen it. Water particles are not intelligent. They don't know about the new capacity, and they don't try to get into the pipe sooner to take advantage of it. Traffic engineering is counterintuitive. We expect wider roads to reduce traffic, but they do the opposite. They just attract more of it. So we have to ask the right questions. And asking how we increase capacity is asking the wrong question. I think I've made my point. Thank you.
Appreciate your pictures. Jeff Hoyle.
A couple of days ago, I went to the city's website and was intending to register for the Comp Plan Summit. So I filled in my first name and last name, and email address, and email address again. And the only thing I had left to do was click the button that says, "I agree" to the third party who's running the website and to their Terms of Service Agreement, the Privacy Agreement, and the Cookies Agreement. And all of a sudden, I said, "Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to be required to do that." So I changed my mind, and I didn't click that button. And I let the time lapse for signing up. And then I printed out these things. The Terms of Service Agreement took 17 pages. The Privacy Agreement took 12 pages. The Cookies Agreement took four pages. And then I took them home and read them. And not being a lawyer, I can't claim to have understood them. But it seemed to be, in some cases, they were pretty intimidating. Nevertheless, Eventbrite, the third party involved here, sent me a message soon after I had typed in these lines. I forget exactly what it said, but I thought it was kind of creepy that they would jump the gun and communicate with me before I had agreed to their terms and conditions. Anyhow, it seems to me that the public shouldn't be required to agree to these things just in order to participate in city government. And I wonder if possibly this matter could be referred to the Policy and Services Committee to see if they agree with me, and if so, figure out some alternate way for people to sign up for things like that. Thanks a lot.
Good, thank you. Stephanie Munoz is our last speaker. Well, next to last.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Stephanie Munoz. And I, over the weekend, I had, I received a response from Superintendent of Schools McGee because, as you may have guessed, I am trying to save that gem because it doesn't seem, I'm a kind of a conservative person. And it seems really very wasteful to throw away millions of dollars of useful building that is in a place that is astonishingly close to transportation, but not in the middle of anybody's beautiful neighborhood. It's in the middle of an acre of dirt. The high school is about a block away, really. And you could very easily put several dozen homeless women in there, especially for a shelter, which isn't really like living. They just come in, they're safe for the night from 7:00 to 7:00, and then they go away again. They don't bother anybody. Well, I got a letter back, and he said, "Well, you know, because of the suicides, I regret being late." And I said, "Because of the suicide? Oh, my God, have we come to that? Where the suicide of a young person? That's the product that Palo Alto makes. The intelligence, and the hard work, and the dedication, and the emotional stability that go into a person who is productive for this society, that makes it work, that invents the products and works on the systems so that everything comes out right. We can't afford to lose those. That's even worse than losing a building. So I think, you know, we've got to do things a little bit differently. And, but I would suggest the first thing is to stop guessing, second-guessing yourselves. You know, there's a, I don't know if you ever look at the post letters, but there's sort of a sarcastic letter in there from somebody that's talking about, "Here's a four-story building, and they bought these transferred development rights." And so they get to put in an extra 40-car-needing spaces with no parking for those cars because they bought the development rights. And I would like to suggest to you that you buy them back. You had the right idea for how many spaces you needed for the workers and the businesses that were in that town. Then by second-guessing yourselves, I mean, don't do it. Just get it back. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Last speaker is Catherine Martno.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt. Oh, that was short. City Council members and City Manager Jim Keen, good evening. I'm here to report on a wonderful Arbor Day festival the weekend before last. We celebrated in Palo Alto in grand style the California Arbor Week. We had about 700 participants at Mitchell Park and with lots of fun activities, like tree climbing, always rope climbing, and bucket lifts for those who were a little less adventurous. This festival came as a partnership with many of the Palo Alto, City of Palo Alto departments, of course, the urban forestry section of Public Works. Also, the Arts Center offered activities. The Junior Museum and Zoo had activities. The Public Utilities Department had lots of advice. We had three bands, three foot trucks, one tree walk, what else? A puppet show, and I'm forgetting some of the wonderful activities we all had. But at some point, we had the visit of two large characters. We had Smokey the Bear and a big squirrel whose name is Professor Arboretum. And they brought this big check. And the check is to the people of Palo Alto. It's drawn on the bank of the urban forest, the urban environment. It's from the street trees of Palo Alto, and the check is in the amount of $6.6 million. And it's presented to the people of Palo Alto. So we thought that we would bring the check and offer it to city council and city staff because we are so grateful for the wonderful work you're doing with the urban forest, the care of it. The $6.6 million is not hard cash, I'm sorry to say, but it's a lot of value. It's the amount, the calculated amount of all of the ecosystem services. So the benefit that street trees bring to Palo Alto on an annual basis. So I thought that maybe you'd appreciate the check. And this is Susan Orzenberg, who is one of the founders of Canopy, and she's helping me here. Who wants it? It's for you guys.
Thank you very much. And you are most welcome to come with or without checks to spread good news about our trees. Thank you. Okay, that completes oral communications and brings us to consent calendar. Okay, that completes oral communications and brings us to consent calendar. If anyone has comments on consent or something to say, otherwise a motion. Oh, Councilmember Dubois.
A move we pass the consent calendar? Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Dubois, seconded by Mark Berman. Any, I don't have any public comments, so all in favor of the consent calendar? And that passes unanimously, seven to nothing, with Councilmembers Scharf and Mayor Holman absent. That brings us to the first action item, number five, Comprehensive Plan Update: Status and Discussion of Existing Comprehensive Plan Themes and Structure. And I will turn it over to staff.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Schmidt. I'm Hillary Gittelman, the Planning Director, and the item this evening is about the Comprehensive Plan Update. And I wanted to start first with a note of thank you, a note of thanks to the council. This year, the council identified as one of their priorities, the completion of the Comprehensive Plan Update with increased focus from the council itself. It's great. Tonight, we're going to talk about the project's current status and what we're doing to get this done. We're also going to talk a little bit about the Comprehensive Plan structure and themes. Several council members, since the beginning of the year, have requested an opportunity for this kind of high-level discussion, and I hope that we'll be able to at least start that discussion this evening. I'm going to start with four slides that you've seen before. They really recap why it's important that we engage in this update to the Comprehensive Plan. The first reason is really that time has passed. Since the current comp plan was adopted, there are new challenges because of that passage of time, and it's an opportune moment to relook at the city's long-term vision. Secondly, looking at the Comprehensive Plan and preparing an update gives us a solid and legal foundation for decision-making going forward as it relates to land use and investment, and city investments. Third, it provides us with an opportunity to respond to community concerns. We've had a lot of dialogue about growth and other issues, and this is a forum in which those issues can be discussed and addressed. Fourth, and I think most importantly, the Comprehensive Plan process is an opportunity for the community to come together and craft a collective vision for what the city will be in the next 15 years or so. It's been a long process so far. We've talked about this a number of times. This process really started back in 2008. When we talked about it in early 2012, we identified a process that would try and move us through expeditiously and get to a completed Comprehensive Plan Update by the end of 2015. Despite those initial ideas, we took some additional time in last year, and our latest schedule to the council projected a completion date sometime in the first quarter of 2016. I'm sure we'll talk about that a little more as we talk about the process this evening. Our focus, since receiving the Planning Commission's recommendation, and that was transmitted to the council early in 2015, our focus has been on community engagement. And I wanted to give my thanks to the leadership group that's been formed to help us with the community engagement activities, and also my thanks to the staff and members of the Planning and Transportation Commission who are here this evening. This leadership group has been meeting, most recently on a bi-weekly basis, to help us plan for a summit that you just heard about from one of the public speakers that is now scheduled for May 30. It's going to be an all-day event convened by the mayor, and it is a big deal. We have 150 people registered so far for the summit. We're viewing it really as an opportunity to discuss some of the big issues we face as a community, but also as an opportunity to recruit people who will be engaged in the community work sessions that will follow the summit. The leadership group has been very clear, the idea of the summit is not to just get in a room and talk about things for one day and then go home and move on, it's to get people engaged in this process and participating through the rest of the planning process. Currently, we're planning outreach events to try and pique people's interest, get them to register and attend the summit. We're also working with our consultants and the leadership group to define outreach activities that will happen concurrent with the summit and after the summit for those people who will just not be able to participate and be in the room and participate in that way. We want to give them other vehicles in which to provide the city with their input. After the summit, we envisioned two tracks, a series of council work sessions and community work sessions. The council work sessions will really focus on the big issues and will inform the work sessions by the community, which will focus more on policy and program language for the updated plan. In the staff report, we have a chart that summarizes some of the topics we think would be addressed in the council work sessions, starting with the growth management or office limit discussions that the council's already begun. And we talk about some of the ways in which the community work sessions could be structured to try and entice folks to participate in the sessions and really build a list of contributors or authors as the process proceeds. This really raises a dichotomy that was first pointed out by Councilmember Klein at the end of last year. He said, "How can you have a plan that needs to be amended to address big issues, but also a plan that you talk about not needing a lot of change?" And I think it is true that both things are true. The plan, the current Comprehensive Plan has such a broad scope. It addresses so many issues, and it does it very thoughtfully. There are whole sections of the Comprehensive Plan that we don't think will need significant revision or updating. But there are these big issues, and you see many of them listed in the left-hand column there that will need to be addressed, and that will ultimately end up in revisions to the plan. I'll give you as one example, the downtown cap, actually, the whole citywide cap and downtown cap are addressed in three, maybe, maybe four policies and programs in the current Comprehensive Plan. So the approach, again, the plan is so broad that you can tackle big issues. It tackles big issues in just a few places, and there's an opportunity to both have an update that makes significant policy adjustments where those are needed, and an update that leaves in place a lot of what we all value about the current Comprehensive Plan. One of the things that we value in the current plan is its vision statement and the themes that it articulates in the introductory section. And these are outlined for you in the staff report. The plan's overall vision is on packet page 136. And as we point out in the staff report, it really is beautifully written. It could have been written in the last week or two. It seems that current. The themes likewise, those are on packet page 137. And our question to you this evening is whether these still capture for you the themes that you'd like to see evidenced in the Comprehensive Plan, whether they should be reordered or prioritized, or if there are things that are missing or that need to be reframed to address the challenges of today. So that's our brief presentation. We'd be happy to take any public comment from those who are here, and then to entertain council comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we have a deadline to try and finish this around 8:30 because we have promised that we would move on to the bridge item at around that time. But I think that gives us sufficient time to discuss. I think the critical thing is comments and/or motions from the council tonight. I think it might be good to first hear public comments unless there's an immediate question to, for what. Okay, I have one speaker from the public, Myla Zelka.
Good evening. Well, I wanted to thank staff. You guys have been working really hard, and I'm one of the folks on the Comp Plan Update Leadership Group. And so it's actually been really fun to brainstorm about how we can encourage our peers and neighbors to come and participate in the summit, so I'm looking forward to that. I just wanted to share that I think, I wish the timeline for this was stretched out a bit longer because in talking to friends and neighbors, there is still a huge need to get a better understanding of all of these issues, transportation, housing, design stuff. I think that our Palo Alto events that started us off were a great foundation, and I guess I just selfishly wish we could have more time to do more of that, and it would help encouraging fellow citizens to participate. And I know that other cities had sort of more thorough, prolonged workshops. But given that we're on this timeline, I would encourage that we include an economic analysis of all the proposed options and that we incorporate our sustainability plan and performance metrics, just because we've been such a leader on climate issues and water consumption and open space preservation and all this stuff, seems like it would make sense to incorporate it into the comp plan. Yeah, I have a bunch of other thoughts, but I think I'm going to keep it to that for this evening, so thank you.
Thank you for your participation and for sharing your ideas. Next speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, council members. This is, comes up year after year, several times a year. But what I've been wanting to say all these years is something like this. When I was married, we lived in Menlo, I was married in a Tivoli church, and I thought it would be nice, we could just have the reception in the backyard. And my mother said, "Oh, yeah, that would be fine." And then she got Mary Gordon and the landscape architect and this, and the plan. And my husband-to-be was going frantic. He said, "You know, what, let's elope." But it turned out that what a plan is in on-the-ground stuff is you have an idea of what it's going to look like 10 years from now and 20 years from now. And so you plant, if you're going to want an oak tree, you plant that now, and you get a big expensive one if you need it. And you see how you're going to put seeding and things, and they aren't exactly the way you want them the first year, but they'll do. And on the fifth year, they're looking pretty good, and they're fine. And then, but it's still the same plan that allows you to invest time, work, and money on building and not taking it away again. That's the point of a plan. What I see with the City of Palo Alto's planning is that it's not like that. You make a plan, and it's like, for this year, oh, this year we'll do it this way. And then everybody out here, and all those people out there, they think, okay, that's the way it's going to be. And then the next year, you come along and change it. I don't, I don't think you realize that the people have a different idea than you. They think of it as a, kind of like a contract. And you think of it as like, well, just sort of like rearranging the furniture to make it more interesting and livable year by year and different from last year. But I think that we need to come to a meeting of the minds, and you need to say to yourself, when we're doing this, how is it going to affect the Palo Alto we're going to have 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now? You can't just, I mean, I guess I got to be more humble. It doesn't seem to me that you can just make an arrangement that's only good for a year or two, or five years. You have to think of what the whole downtown is going to look like if they have five-story buildings. And I would recommend that you hold off on the five-story buildings. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Bob Moss.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schmidt and council members. I was debating whether I wanted to talk on this tonight, but I think I'll give you some information. I've been looking at the data on housing issues in Palo Alto, and both, meaning the housing supply challenges and residential needs are two of the points that the Planning Director has listed as being important. So I just wanted to give you some figures that I've been coming up with in the last few days. I got a card from a local realtor today discussing home prices in Palo Alto. And the median home price in February, last month, was more than $2.4 million. And the median home price from this February to last February, 2014, increased 32%, which I found shocking. The average home price, not the median, was more than $3.2 million. That's a small number of houses sold, 17, but still, it shows that we have a really expensive market, as you've all known. If people want to buy raw land and build a house, based on what the Maybell site sold for, raw land in Palo Alto costs more than $8 million an acre. So building even medium-income housing will be extremely difficult. There was a house on the market that sold, 990-square-foot house, two-bedroom, sold for $2.2 million last month, which I found shocking. So we have a real problem with the cost of housing, the cost of land in Palo Alto, compared with the desire for people to buy here and rent here and live here. This is not new. When we were creating the first Comprehensive Plan in 1978, we had a concern about the jobs, housing imbalance. So we've had a jobs, housing imbalance in Palo Alto that has been serious for at least the last 35 years, and it's not getting any better. They're cramming more workers into the same space. So what's the answer? I'll be honest, I don't know. I don't know how we can get more reasonable-cost housing into this city, even if there was a, when we had the Great Recession, the average housing price in Palo Alto only dropped 13%. Nationwide, it dropped 49%. So we have a real problem with accommodating moderate and low-income people here. It's going to be very expensive. I don't know how we're doing it. I wish, of course, I could give you an answer.
Thanks for sharing data. Okay, that is the last public comment card I have, so we're back to council. Any questions, comments, or motions? Councilmember Burt.
Not that I wanted to go first. It looks like nobody else was willing to. So the recommendation is that we review and discuss the structure of the existing comp plan, its seven themes, and reaffirm our wish to maintain them in the comp plan, extend the horizon year, add to concept plans, update goals, policies, and programs as So those are the things roughly before us tonight, as I understand it. We may or may not get through those. This is an opportunity to begin to wade in in a substantive way, not just at a high level. So I don't know what the intention is, but I guess I would hope that we'll be able to have a series around so that this can be a bit more of a dialogue than us just making statements to each other. So I guess that would be my hope. A few thoughts. One is the elements, and we have a set of state-mandated elements, we have the elements that we've had in the past, and then we have our proposed elements. So I had a few, both questions and comments. First, the state now mandates a safety element. Our structure in our draft folds that in with the natural and urban environment. And as I thought about this, I was struggling to really understand why those would be in the same the same element. They're not really highly overlapping. It's sort of like, safety was an orphan and we looked at someplace to throw it in. But Hillary, can you give me the, as best you understand it, the thought process? And I understand that, well, I guess I don't know at what point in time our draft attempted to add the safety element and what was the thinking behind trying to put it in with natural and urban environment?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. That decision by the Planning and Transportation Commission really predates my tenure with the city, so I could explore that with them, with the members of the commission at the time, and report back to you. I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts and those of your colleagues about whether you think that's an effective way to organize or whether you prefer to see a topic like safety organized as a separate element.
I see Commissioner Michael here. I don't know whether you were deeply involved in that particular question. If you have any insight on it, Chair, may we hear from Commissioner Michael?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, if you could speak in the microphone.
So, good evening. It also predates my serving on the PTC, but I understand from the word that then manager Stephen Turner did that there was a desire to streamline the structure, and I think there was opportunistic to make this in combination rather than standalone.
Okay. Mark, while you're still there, maybe I should ask another question that, once again, it may have predated your term. But at the same time, we were trying to streamline it, we took two concept plans, East Meadow and California Avenue, and put them in as separate elements rather than put them in, fold them in within the land use. And I wasn't clear why that is proposed in that manner. Do you know?
You know, it may not have reflected a lot of clear thinking. I believe it was because the work on the East Meadow area concept plan, which predated my involvement, was done as a sort of a distinct effort. And likewise, the California Avenue area concept plan was looked at in isolation, so it wasn't editorially considered as part of one of the other traditional elements.
Okay, thanks. So Hillary, on those concept plans, do you happen to know why they're being proposed as separate elements rather than within the land use section?
Councilmember Burt, obviously I wasn't engaged in all of those conversations which predate me, but my understanding since arriving in Palo Alto is that that had been the council's direction, to identify those two geographic areas and give them special attention. Whether the council's direction was to make them specific as separate elements or as part of the land use and community environment, I don't know. I guess I had assumed, because when I got there, they were standalone elements, that that was council's direction.
I may be forgetting something. It clearly was our direction to have concept plans. But then, once we look at how to organize the comprehensive plan, I don't recall a discussion around that, unfortunately. Mayor Holman's not here, and her memory on this may be better than mine. But I don't recall a discussion on it. And as I just step back and think about it either way, I'm not sure that it's the right way to do it. So if we're looking at streamlining it, we're, on the one hand, we're jamming the safety component or element under natural and urban environment, under a notion of, well, trying to not have too many sections. And then we're adding these two sections that seem more naturally to be just their major components of the land use and community design. But they're part of that. That's what they are.
Yeah. Can I jump in? I mean, I was here, I think, during this period of time. And I think that, I mean, my instincts are that in many ways, the comp plan, attention to the comprehensive plan from 2008 to, I don't know, roughly 2013, something like that, 2012, 2013, was almost exclusively focused on these two concept plans. And the overall comprehensive plan itself was bit off-camera with the staff in the Planning and Transportation Commission as it sort of looked at sort of updating the plan and got into more and more detail. And, you know, I think that sort of the question about the existing structure or how things were mashed into the prior structure, probably just sort of decisions or judgment calls that were just made by various folks. I don't think that, under any circumstances, the staff today is adhering to any particular focus on that. And I think in a lot of ways, I think, obviously, I think the council wants to be considerate of the work that the PTC did during that period and taking that into account. But I think ultimately, we're at a stage where this is really the council's plan to look at how you would advise, you know, your own thinking about the structure and these other, these other components, the themes or whatever, kind of going forward.
And I eventually do want to get to talking about the themes, but I was initially thinking I'd start off talking about themes, and I realized that maybe it's more to build that from the bottom up in terms of why there may be a basis to look at and make these themes more contemporary, even though they, they're not bad today, they're just not as contemporary as we may want. And as I recall about, you know, as we gave the Planning Commission an original assignment to do just an update, and then that started to evolve into something greater, and now we're having a reexamination of certain key elements of the comp plan and whether they be changes or additions, we have these substantive things on top of what the Planning Commission was doing. So they not only had to make it contemporary was an assignment, but to make it more readable and better organized so that it was more accessible to the public. Because unless you have, you know, this many dog ears and four different colors of highlighting, it's a little difficult to follow, and even then, it's tough. So I think they moved very effectively in that direction. As I think back about this process, there are some things in the draft that came out of the Planning Commission that are basically a series of substantive questions and choices that instead got folded into the comp plan as recommended comp plan language, all put in there at once. And I think what we ought to be doing is, in addition to whatever new issues we're identifying that we want to address as consideration for the new comp plan, we should try to pull out, out of the changes that the Planning Commission recommended, pull out the things that are really substantive choices and bring them together as organized set of choices for discussion. Because we didn't really go through the process of saying whether we do agree, don't agree with those choices, aside from the issue of whether what they were pushing forward a year or two ago is still, is going to be our current thinking by the time this comp plan is adopted. But we didn't go through that decision process and say, "Oh, well, these are actually choices. They're changes, and maybe we agree with 80% of them." But we didn't go through that process to say, they didn't come and say, "Okay, we're doing this draft, and before we get too far down the road, we now are wanting to make some changes that are significant, and here's what we recommend and why, and here's the other alternative, and what do we get our feedback?" And the community's feedback at the same time. Okay. So then, a couple of other areas, as I've thought about it, we had one speaker talk about our sustainability elements and our natural and urban environment have, when we had our last comp plan, we had a, certainly a different nomenclature for environmental initiatives. Now, we're basically 20 years into a thinking around what is sustainable. And so there's a real question of how those components should be folded in and even whether, how we title that section, whether that reflects our current thinking. And then once we, the theme also that is reflecting that section and whether it needs to be made more contemporary. The same thing with our transportation, which fortunately in our prior comp plan, we had an entire section on transportation and many of the objectives that we're now, not only we're giving even greater force, focus on, even greater resources, and are becoming a fundamental part of our vision for our future, that we are going to have to truly implement many of the things that were notions in the prior comp plan around what we called reducing reliance on the automobile as the theme. Well, that's not untrue, but it doesn't really capture the vision and frankly, not just the vision, but the plan that we're in the process of adopting that will be fundamental to the transformation that we are hoping to have in our community. So I would say that those two examples are ones where they point to a reconsideration of those elements, the thrust of them, perhaps even their titles, and then the descriptions of the elements. And we have these seven elements. And I'd like to turn the floor over to others at this time, but before the evening's out or at a subsequent meeting, be able to wade into more discussion on whether we want to make these, update these elements, make them more contemporary, and have them better align with the changes in emphasis and, to some degree, direction that we are heading in with the new comp plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Themes. I shed, I am sorry. Thanks, Cory. I said elements, and I should have said themes.
Thank you. Councilmember DuBois.
I guess I'll start off with some questions. So questions for fellow council members and for staff, kind of the overall timeline. So Hillary, if I understand the staff report, now we're looking at kind of updates and edits through 2015 and then maybe completion in 2016 broadly, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I just think we should have a discussion, you know, is that the right timeline or not? And, you know, my input would be, I want to be kind of quality-driven. You know, one of the speakers in the public kind of had that same suggestion, rather than timeline-driven. And so I just want to keep that in mind, not just get wed to the schedule and force it to complete on that timeline. And then I kind of want to also have a discussion about the next level of detail on tasks and kind of what's the process underneath that. And kind of to echo what Councilmember Burt was saying about, you know, the update that happened, it seems like if there was a way to separate pure cleanup and deletion, these things, programs that were accomplished, from the more substantial choices, that would be very useful. It might be some work to kind of pry that apart in the update. But I think that's where a lot of things, you know, there's some issues with that current And then from your presentation, I'd like to understand your idea of kind of citizen involvement post-summit. I don't know if you can talk about that right now?
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. We're still working with our team and the leadership group about how these post-summit work sessions would be structured exactly. But getting to your prior point, one of the ideas we have been working with is to design a process where we had a, you know, in Latin class, they used to call it a pony, you know, with the English text and the Latin text side by side. We would have the current comp plan, so the existing comp plan, and the version that the PTC developed side by side, and use that as a way to structure community discussions about policies and programs. So the community sessions would be focused on the details and the language of the plan, using that opportunity to compare both versions, but also to accept the input from the city council on these larger policy questions that the council would be dealing with in their work sessions, the growth management strategies, the housing sites, and et cetera. That would, we see those as in the council's purview and influencing the community discussions. At this point, our working hypothesis is these work sessions will be scheduled out in advance so that everybody will know when a certain topic is due to be discussed, and they can select the work sessions that they would like to attend and participate in. But more details will be developed between now and the summit, exactly how that will work.
I mean, it sounds good. I like that idea of the English and Latin side by side. And is there any implication in that they be organized around elements of the plan?
I think, in all likelihood, some of the work sessions will be organized around elements. Some of the elements are just so complex that they're going to have to be divided into pieces or topics to deal with in a coherent way. The land use and community environment element is a good example. There are sections of that element that are about geographic areas, and I think we'll have to pay careful attention to each of those geographic areas. And then there are other sections of the plan that have to do with urban design and other, more topics than areas that we might want to separate out and handle in a separate set of sessions.
Kind of another thought I had, is kind of thinking about overall themes versus the vision for each element versus top-level goals. And I think it's really more around goals maybe than themes, but if there was some idea of weighting of goals, I think a lot of conflicts arise when a proposal is brought forward and complies with one part of the plan and not the other, and we really don't have a way to talk about kind of what are major goals and which ones supersede others if they do. And so kind of forcing that kind of discussion, I think, would be good. So there's a weighting of goals, and then there's a sequencing of goals. And even though our comp plan came out in 1998, there's still a lot of policies and programs we haven't gotten to yet, right? So there's a lot of it that can carry forward. But with the new plan, what are the things we really think we're going to get to first, and what things would come later? One other idea I wanted to throw out there was, I think, I think some kind of framework for evaluating themes and top-level goals would be useful. And one that I came up with personally, it was just kind of bucketing into three big buckets, kind of core city services, additional services that would improve the city, and policies that impact external things, things that are external to the city. And I guess I did have a question similar to what Councilmember Burt did. Do you know how the natural element became the natural and urban environment?
Again, I don't know all the history, Councilmember DuBois, but I expect it's because it deals with issues having to do with the urban portions of the city as well as the natural areas. So it was a title change in effort to better communicate what topics are considered in the element.
Yeah. I mean, the state requires us to talk about open space, conservation, safety, noise. It also felt like maybe those were crammed together, like we should have natural environment on its own, and then urban environment and safety maybe could be together. But, you know, it was, there's things about kind of preservation and open space that might be separate from urban environment.
I think, reading the text of one of the themes, I think one of the ideas in the existing comp plan was that the natural elements infiltrate the urban environment, you know, so we may have preserved the open spaces in the baylands and the foothills, but there are creeks within the urban environment that have natural resource value.
Right. Just seems like there also be pure urban topics that could be segregated, noise and that kind of stuff. One last thing, and then I'll stop and maybe come back later if we do another round, but also just thinking about the summit and ways to work with citizen groups. There was a letter I thought was pretty appropriate that came in, talked about maybe using comparisons. So are there other cities or parts of other cities that seem particularly appealing for neighborhoods or for urban areas? And then also kind of identifying if there are any sacred cows, you know, high or low buildings, open space, and really just kind of, I guess, finding areas of agreement and, you know, separating on the ones that might be, you know, more discussion. you know, separating on the ones that might be, you know, more discussion. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Thank you, Greg. And several things, just to go back on them, and I would agree, it's hard to remember, especially what happened before Mark and I came on board. And I want to reflect, though, on what I think I heard several times. It would seem as though, if we're looking at the downtown area, which has had a cap now since 1986, which has actually worked relatively well, since we are, as I recall, at about, of that cap, maybe 70%, am I right? The cap was 10% of 350, and of that 350, I think we've hit maybe 290, not even 300 yet. So we have some example of where a cap, or a control, or whatever we want to refer to it as being in our community, has worked over a long period of time. But I can remember, and Councilmember Burt, I think both you and the mayor have discussed many times, that I can recall, the California Avenue Concept Plan. And it's one of the areas she has been the most concerned about, whether or not that concept plan should only be California Avenue or include fries in it as well, what kind of plan it should be, do we call it a specific plan, a site plan, a concept plan? And to reference what Tom just spoke about, is it part of the semantics of what we're dealing with, or is it, you know, is it some other kind of nomenclature? Because it's really important for us to know exactly what we're talking, at least what we mean when we're talking about it. And I think that's an important part. And while I don't remember as many discussions about East Medical Circle, certainly discussions about California Avenue have been extremely extensive, and we've had a great deal of feedback about that. So going up to a totally, that's one reflection, but going to a completely different area, and it's one that we made a priority this year, which was talking about healthy communities. The mayor and I were just back in Washington, and there was a lot of discussion about communities, healthy communities, what creates a healthy community. It's very much around safety and land use, very much around, circles around that. And I'm going to guess that inherently it must fit under natural and urban environment and safety. Would you guess that would be where it fits, Hillary, or? Sometimes it's a whole separate element. I think it is actually in Mountain View.
I think it's going to be one of those threads that's woven through many of these elements, because it could be in transportation, for example, when we talk about bicycle and pedestrian facilities. It could be in land use, when we talk about creating walkable, pedestrian-scaled and pedestrian-friendly environments. So it's like sustainability, I think, the idea of building healthy communities could be woven through probably all of these elements.
That's a good answer, because I think separating it out may be very difficult, and therefore weaving it in, and looking back at the old comprehensive plan, which I know Pat's got his in front of him, but as I, that's the new comp plan, sorry. But that was, the whole aim of that was livability, walkability, and things being, sometimes I hesitate to use the word, but more urbanized. But that was the goal. The goal was to have more near transit, more, a better circulation plan, which is the one now that's referred to as transportation. And thinking a bit, Tom, of just what you talked about, which is, how many different elements do we get in here, and what are we going to call them, and what other aspects of this could be taken up if we were to extend it somewhat? And I know that Mila came up, she's probably still here, Mila came up earlier and discussed that. And so coming back again to your summit discussion, similar to what Tom asked, but I think there's a great deal of interest and enthusiasm in this group. Am I correct? I haven't been able to go to one of the groups yet. But do you get the, are you sensing from this group that they would like more time? They want to discuss some of the elements more thoroughly? Is that the kind of thing that is coming out of this group?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Niss. Just to recap, the leadership group's role thus far, and really, they were impaneled to help us with community outreach and community engagement. So when we're talking about community work sessions to follow the comprehensive, I mean, sorry, the summit on May 30th, we're talking about, this would be members of the public who would come, it wouldn't be exclusive to the leadership group, it would be members of the public we would be inviting to participate in these work sessions, hopefully a broad cross-section of the public.
Well, I know that you and they, Mila's the only one, I guess, that's here tonight from that group, but, thank you. But I know that that's been a really diligent group and has worked hard, and thank you for all the input that you've given to them as well. That's really valuable. So I will do the same and give somebody else a chance to jump in.
Good. Thank you. I have no other lights. If there is no one else, I would be happy to talk. Councilmember Philseth.
Say a couple things. Say a couple things here. So first of all, you know, I think this is the right level of discussion, right? And I think, first of all, I want to say thank you to the staff for their continuing, you know, focus on this stuff. And I think this is a level of, you know, intensity on this that seems higher, at least more productive at this point than it was a year ago, and I think that's just potentially because we're farther in the process. But so, thank you. A couple of things we talked about, I very much like the idea of sort of prioritizing things into buckets, right? So core city services versus, you know, option, elective city services and so forth, right? One of the things, I just want to throw this out, that we have not had in the comp plan, and I'm not sure this actually fits into the comp plan, or whether it's just part of the discussion. But it seems to me that we could benefit significantly, as part of the discussion, from a much more quantitative element, looking at these kinds of things. Because a lot of the things that we're talking about, you know, growth, quality of life, and so forth, these are very important things, but there's not sort of universal clarity on exactly what they mean, right? And if we could induce some more objectivity on exactly what it is we're talking about, and what some of the relationships between those things are, I think that would help facilitate the discussion. So for example, you know, in the comprehensive plan, we have numerous themes that say, we want to foster X. But how much X are we talking about? Because if you say we want this much new parking, you have one set of outcomes, and if you say we want that so much new parking, you have a considerably different set of outcomes, right? So if you want to take a system perspective on all this, then you want to understand the interactions between these things at more than just a conceptual level. So for example, right, there is a relationship between jobs, housing, transportation demand, demand for city services, demand for school space, and so forth, right? I think that it's actually possible to take a first-order cut at trying to figure out what some of those relationships are, and I think that's very important, because you have a chart like this one, right, which is projected job growth over the next 20, 30 years, right? And, you know, how much job growth we have is going to have a huge impact on what our demand for transportation, both via cars and via other mechanisms, is going to be. But I think we could understand some of that stuff, at least in more than just conceptual level. And the second piece is, you know, a projection like this, it depends, to some extent, on our policies, right? And, you know, a very large part of what we want to do here is set policies. And so, you know, is this the right amount of job growth? I don't know, right? But it seems to me that if we had a more quantitative measurement of this, a more quantitative view of this, and its ramifications on demand for things like city services and stuff we care about, we'd be in a better place to have the discussion. There's an aphorism that you can't fix what you can't measure, right? And I think we should take a whack at measuring some of these things. I don't know that that belongs within the core of the comp plan, but we are talking about the structure of the comp plan, or as some kind of adjunct. I suspect that such a thing you'd want to revise more often than every 10, 15 years, but you might want to track it. But if you had something like that, I think you'd be, we'd be in a better place for, a better place for a discussion. I'll stop there for the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Berman.
Well, I also want to thank staff and the community groups that have been really engaged and our commissions that have been, over eight years, that have been really engaged and involved in the process so far. I'm definitely glad that we're, you know, hopefully the light is, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. It's still small, but it's there. To quickly address a couple of issues brought up by Councilmember Burt, I think, so I think he brings up a good point about safety with natural and urban environment, and I'd be curious to know, I'll have to go back and read the proposed element more closely, you know, to formulate my own thoughts on it, but I'd be also curious to know how it was decided that that was folded in, or whether or not it makes sense to either add safety to another one of the elements, or just break it out on its own. I'm less worried, would the two concept plans be considered their own separate elements, or are they considered kind of added concept plans? Is there a difference? Does it matter, you know, how they're kind of classified in the document?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Burt. I think, you know, substantively, I don't, Berman, I'm sorry. I don't think that it would matter. I mean, they would both be, no matter where they are in the comp plan, they're part of the comp plan, they have weight as comp plan goals, policies, and programs. But we're, you know, we're here to learn the council's preference. If you'd like to see them incorporated into the land use element with other geographic sections of that element, or broken out. They've been given a great deal of separate attention over the years, and I think that's why we suggested they be separated.
Sure. So, yeah, I'm more curious about the safety aspect, I'm less curious at this stage, but I'll also go back and reread those and wonder how those might be integrated into other elements as opposed to broken out on their own. I, so I think, you know, Councilmember Philseth, you know, brought up two important issues in quantifying issues like job growth and population growth, and I think there could be merit in, you know, quantifying those. I also think it's important, though, to quantify the, well, I guess, my bigger concern is the impact of those changes, and so, and how we address those impacts. And so it's not so much, I don't think there has to be a direct correlation between, you know, increased job growth and increased traffic, if you can find ways to, and policies that mitigate the impact of those, that increased job growth, or the increased housing, I guess, is something I'm more concerned about, or focused on. And so, you know, I think there are a lot of different, you know, things that you have to consider when looking at these different changes, and it's not always so black and white as, you know, this will equal that impact, as opposed to the ways that you can affect that. I, we had a suggestion from somebody who emailed to us about, I don't know, do you want us going into kind of wordsmithing of the themes at this point? Is that appropriate, or is it more to provide, or I won't, I won't?
It's up to you.
Okay. You know, the point was made that the meeting residential and commercial needs section has a sentence, "The plan establishes the physical boundaries of residential and commercial areas and sets limits where necessary to ensure that business and housing remain compatible." And I agree with the last part, it's important for business and housing to remain compatible, but I think what we've seen over the past 15 years or so is more of an emphasis on mixed use. And, you know, one of the things that we're going to be talking about a lot over the next year is taking some of the housing sites off the housing element from South Palo Alto and moving them into the downtown area and the Calav area, where, again, you know, that housing might have less of an impact than it would have if it were in other parts of Palo Alto. So I don't know if that's the proper wording, this physical boundaries of residential and commercial areas, when I think we're trying to encourage a blending of residential and commercial in certain parts of town. Definitely not in 90% of Palo Alto, but in certain parts of town. You know, that's something that we're looking at emphasizing, and so, you know, we might want to reword that as we move forward. Yeah, you know, I think, that's, for this conversation, in this high level, you know, I think that's kind of all I'll have to say for the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolbach.
First, thanks to colleagues for your comments. Thank you to members of the public who've emailed us and who've come to speak tonight. Thank you especially to staff and PTC and the leadership group, and everybody who's been working, you know, on this, you know, for the city, whether you're getting paid or not, to really focus on this and help us start to frame this discussion. I know that we've been throwing, you know, it's been said before, but I think it needs to be said again, we've been throwing a lot at Plan Department, and know that we're going to keep throwing more stuff at you, and I'm not sorry for it, just I sympathize that we are throwing a ton of stuff your way. And, you know, I just actually want to say something about that, that I think is really relevant for this conversation, which is, while it's very important for us to do our job of setting policy direction, and, you know, maybe we could do a better job of saying what it is that we want, I hope that staff will feel empowered and not shy about telling us what you need, so that you can take ownership of implementing that process going forward, with whatever it is that we decide we want to do going forward. I really hope that all parts of staff will not be afraid to come back to us and say, well, if we want to move at this rate, you know, and do this much work, and this much community outreach, and this much analysis of codes, et cetera, well, here's how long that's going to take, or here's how many more people we're going to need to hire, or here's how many consultants we're going to need to hire on an interim basis. So I really hope that, you know, as we clarify what it is that we're looking for, that you will clarify for us what that's going to take and how we can empower that. Looking at the, you know, kind of an ideal process, you know, I wasn't involved in seeing the process through the last several years, or the new process that really got restarted last year. But, you know, I think, you know, an ideal process would include a lot of expert lectures, you know, look at, you know, there's some other cities like San Mateo, I think Redwood City's also working on this. We do a ton of community outreach as a second big component. You know, there's actually a city in Australia, Adelaide, Australia, that's done some really great stuff. They're taking like our Palo Alto and For the Love of Palo Alto, and they're, you know, going to a huge level beyond that even. But it's, you know, another great example to look at. And then, you know, following on, you know, a lot of community building and a lot of community outreach, working with neighborhoods and others in the community, and maybe finding ways to incorporate significant input from people who are maybe too busy to come to a lot of physical meetings, but might be able to correspond with the city. There are a lot of very busy but very smart and interested people in Palo Alto, and interested in seeing how we can really bring more of them into this as well. But following that, then, you know, some kind of policy advisory group going forward. And although it was before my time, my understanding is that this is kind of what we did with our last comp plan, and I know that, or I think that the direction we're going right now is a little bit different from what we did with our last comp plan. And so before I go on, you know, does staff have any thoughts about how our current process is divergent from our last, you know, real comp plan process? And, yeah, that's my one question for right now, but I've got a couple more.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Wolbach. I think what we discussed last year, when we were bringing forward the process that we're now on, is just the fact that we'd already spent so many years at this we're now on, is just the fact that we'd already spent so many years at this comprehensive plan update since, I mean, really, the city recognized the need to do the update in 2006, and the process started in 2008. And so, I think all of us thought, if, if we could take back some of those years and start again, we would have been doing a very traditional process, like the one you mentioned, and like the one that was so successful last time with the CPAC. I think because of the elapsed time, we recommended the current process that we're on, trying to use work sessions at the council and, and in community sessions to move forward a little more expeditiously and align the preparation of the EIR that's going to be needed to adopt the comprehensive plan update and, and take care of some of the quantitative analysis that has been discussed with the plan preparation. So we're on a slightly different pass, path, but I guess this is our opportunity to hear from the council if you have adjustments or changes you want to make to that process.
Jim, did you want to help on this?
Yes, if, if I could amplify it, and again, I, if the council would indulge me, I'll give you my perspective as city manager about what we were doing in these earlier years. I think that when we, in 2006 or whenever, when we started looking at the comp plan, really there were these directions to really focus on these two problem areas and these area concept plans with East Meadow and, and Cal Avenue. And actually, I was amazed that it took us so long to deal with the planning in these very small areas, to the point that, in many, I mean, the council's still awaiting the comp, the Cal Avenue completion. Along that process, the, you know, the economy went in the tank. We, we cut staff positions. In many ways, we were even dealing with anxiety about losing retail and, and businesses. And I would say in a lot of ways, it really was not a focus on the comp plan, other than sort of, sort of slowly chugging along on those two little area plans. And then, again, it's kind of off camera, as I said, might have said earlier, the PTC began to sort of, you know, try to modernize, as Councilmember Burt was saying, the, the plan. And in one sense, what seemed like a little task evolved in kind of a three-year process of more and more and more, and got to the point, about just the time it was going to hand it over to the council, the, the regional economic turnaround was in full force, the, the pressures of growth were bam, there. And I think the council and the community were sort of hit with this, "Wow, we've, we've got a lot of stuff we have to deal with, and yet we've been working on this for a long period of time," and how to, how to reconcile that. And Hillary and I were talking about this earlier today, and she was even saying to me, you know, you know, "I'm sure the council might feel pressures to be looking at the process and the schedule from where we are. Should we, should we just advance that right now?" Or signal, as she just did, "We're here to serve the council as to where you want to go." My own instincts are, you're going to want to change that process that we're talking about, the timeline. But exactly what and how, that, that's a discussion for you. I, I would urge one thing, and I think a number of council members have said it. I think the council knows a lot about where the, where the big choice areas are. And I think one of the biggest mistakes as far as a process in time would be for us to be like the overachieving students we so often are, and start at the bottom up, like fine watchmakers, getting each component aligned with each other, and rather identify these top-line themes, but with more detail. What, what does this mean? How do you, how do you push this? What, what's the message in this planning process in a way? And then reconcile ultimately inconsistencies or snip away components. I, I, I think that there aren't a lot of people here right now, because this is still an arcane conversation. There's not anything to specifically react to. I'm sure if the council was out, able to paint a picture about some of the choices of where you were going, you could get more folks interested and activated. What is the picture of El Camino Real you're thinking about, or the vision for the next 15 years? And where are the 10 areas within these different themes where you're really saying, quantified or however we do this, how you see what the future is? And I know that there's a tension always for the council as elected representatives to make sure you're, you're listening to folks, but I think there's a challenge about getting more quickly to some, even if they're tentative, expressions of visions that are quantified and what you think is important sooner than later. And then let the process, I think it will unfold in a much better way. I would just look back on some comp plans that I've done that had exquisite detail, but you could always sort of say there were three or four main factors to them. The, the land use pattern had been restructured in such a way you really knew this was going to take, where growth was going to take place, or whether it was going to be urban or suburban or whatever, or how, how things were going to be paid for. And we've been in this place where we are all saying, you know, "We really have a good foundation, but we need to update it," or the new, this new council, and I mean it just as any new council would come in, would express it in your contemporary terms as to where the emphasis needs to be. Sounds like it's, it's very close, but I, I do worry if we're not careful, we could get bogged down in, in a lot of bottoms-up details, rather than you all pretty quickly trying to identify where you things, think things are really key. And, and to me, it sounds like, I mean, I almost feel like we're, we're at a campfire, and we've got the fire going, and actually, everything we really need to talk about is in the darkness just outside the circle, you know? And if we just take out the flashlight or the torch, there we go, okay, good, this is what we really want to talk about. And I would encourage that you find a way to do that sooner than later. I don't, I think it's actually very close. And then if they have an elongated process, I will think it will be about people getting engaged and talking about the things that most matter, not necessarily how everything gets knit together in the plan, and whether it's in this chapter or that chapter. I think those are things that could come later. My thoughts.
Thank you, Planning Director Gittleman, and thank you, City Manager Keane, for your thoughts. I, I appreciate that. And, you know, this again goes back to, you know, our role on council of figuring out what it is we want. And I think it's good to hear that, you know, staff is willing to run with the ball, whatever we give them, but we need to be clear about where they want, where we, where we want them to take it. So just looking at the, looking at the themes as they're presented here, and I know that Councilmember Burt had mentioned that he, he does want to return to this, I'll just say, I think that the themes that we have from the existing comp plan are pretty good. I was also going to mention my concern that, that Councilmember Berman beat me to it about the phrase about maintaining physical boundaries of residential and commercial areas, that we might want to look at changing that in one direction. Not to allow commercial to significantly intrude into residential areas, but that we should be looking at residential intruding significantly, perhaps, into some of our more exclusively or predominantly commercial areas. You know, my understanding is that, you know, mixed use in Palo Alto, because of the FAR requirements, you, it's illegal to have, or almost impossible to have more housing than office in mixed use in areas that are zoned commercial. You know, that's maybe not a comp plan change, but maybe that's something we want to look at, to allow mixed use that focuses more on housing rather than more on jobs, so that as we deal with our jobs-housing balance, there's, you know, an opportunity for mixed use to actually be productive, rather than just digging the hole deeper. Yeah, so that, that is one area that I think we should maybe look at tweaking. Looking at the existing theme about meeting our housing supply challenges, as, as Bob Moss pointed out, without using these phrase, you know, these words, we're essentially failing at that. You know, we're, we're not doing so well in meeting our housing supply challenges. My view is that, I think, from, I've heard from a lot of the community, that's a major, major, important, missing piece, or failing piece of our existing comp plan. I, I do hope to see that retained, and I hope to see that prioritized. If we do highlight two or three, or if there's an, even a, you know, implicit indication that two or three of our, our themes are really important moving forward, as, as City Manager Keane pointed out, I think that's a really important one. Same thing with reducing reliance on the automobile, as was mentioned earlier. That's something that we, we've started to make some important steps towards, our bike plan, bike pedestrian plan, et cetera. The, the growing discussions about imposing very strict transportation demand management regulations on new developments, whether they're office developments, or even on, you know, housing developments near transit. I think that there is a lot we can do moving forward to really turn that theme of reducing reliance on the automobile into reality. So I really hope that one is maintained and strengthened moving forward. Just a couple other thoughts. I'm not making any really specific suggestions, I'm just kind of putting things out there for colleagues to consider, and also maybe for staff to, to think about as well. You know, on this question of East Meadow Circle Fabian Way Concept Plan and California Avenue Concept Plan, I'm also not sure that needs to be in the comp plan as separate elements, but whether, however they're listed, you know, they're obviously important areas of, of, of planning. I would also suggest that, you know, over the next five, 10, 15 years, you know, in the duration of this comp plan, downtown, El Camino Real, I think, should definitely be included. Now, whether we call them specific plans, which carry a lot of legal definition, or, you know, and create a, a more difficult process, or we use, you know, a concept area plan, which actually I need to, I don't know if we can get some guidance from staff on whether there's a legal definition and requirements that come with a concept area plan, or we call them a precise plan, which, as I understand, does not carry as much legal baggage and gives us more flexibility and might allow a more streamlined process. You know, even if we just call them precise plans, we could have several. I mean, I think Mountain View has like 30-something precise plans. I don't think that they're all individual, you know, elements in their, in their, you know, comp plan. But there are a number of areas of the city where we really should have, I think, specialized As I mentioned before, a big question, I think, for all of us is how we can empower staff to own the process. I do like the suggestion that Mila Zelka had mentioned about incorporating sustainability in the climate action plan more centrally in our comprehensive plan. However that's done, I, I like that idea. I think it's, that's worth exploring. And I really want to echo what Councilmember Phil Seth was saying about being quantitative and doing really careful, and actually, a couple members of the public also talked about, you know, the importance of economic analysis. You know, starting to, to what degree we can, you know, starting to get some numbers and starting to think about how thing, you know, having some numbers that back up decisions about trade-offs, right? Because that's what policy is, it's about, you know, finding ways to coordinate, you know, values, or, you know, choosing priorities and picking trade-offs. So another thing that was before my time, so I might be getting the details wrong, so I hope somebody will correct me if I'm way off base here. But I've, I've heard a little bit about the Livingston-Blaney Study from 1971, which demonstrated that economic development, which demonstrated that econ, I haven't had a chance to read it yet, I just heard about recently, that the, that demonstrated that, you know, through an economic analysis, that developing the foothills would be a net economic loss, not an economic benefit.
It's before that.
It was, it was before that?
It was in the middle 70s.
Right, so this was '71, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I just heard you.
And, so somewhere around there, but there was, the point is that there was an economic study done, you know, quantitative economic study done of, you know, what are the trade-offs? What are the economic trade-offs of developing the foothills? And they determined that developing the foothills was an economic harm, not an economic benefit. And that bolstered and spurred on the movement to preserve the foothills, you know, ecologically, rather than develop, realized it's not going to benefit us economically, and it's certainly going to hurt us ecologically. And now we have the foothills as one of Palo Alto's greatest treasures, and the economic analysis actually helped us, you know, that economic analysis blending with the sustainability emphasis even back then, you know, got us a great benefit. So that's just, you know, one example historically, as I understand, where the, the quantitative analysis led to a really positive outcome for Palo Alto. So I really want to thank Councilmember Phil Seth for, for raising that critical point. Those are my thoughts for right now.
Good, thank you. Let me make a few comments and see if I can step away from the fire. Staff has asked us for guidance. In our staff report, you quote from the comp plan. "Comp plan is a primary tool for guiding the future development of the city. On a daily basis, the city is faced with tough choices. A comp plan provides a guide for making those choices by describing long-term goals." Councilmember DeBois said, "We should set priorities." I would pick priority of land use. If you look at what's happened under the current comp plan, we have 3.04 jobs per employed residence, and every forecast I have seen, as we work down the road, will be, that number will rise. Over the last 15 years, we've added about 510,000 square feet of office space, while the retail space has declined by about 40,000 square feet. During that time period, or during the last five years, property taxes paid by non-residents have fallen from 30% to 25%. Cars parked, cars of employees parked in residential areas probably number around 1,600 today. The existing conditions report has said, "Over the last 15 years, traffic has increased at major intersections by somewhere between 33% and 53%." Can go on, but when you look at how people in Palo Alto are responding to this, this annual survey says these land use problems and their manifestations are of concern, deep concern to the citizens. We have an opportunity on May 30th to go to the summit and say, "Here are three or four critical issues we'd like you to look at." So let me make a simple motion. Motion is, "The summit sessions will explore the impacts of replacing theme six, meeting residential and commercial needs, with the following. The number of residents and number of employees will grow at the same rate over time. The rate of growth of jobs and residents will remain at or below the average from Okay, do not have a second.
So, can I, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are you saying that jobs and residents have to stay the same if there was some reason that, say, the ratio improved? Would that go against your motion?
I'm asking the summit to look at the consequences or the impacts of having them grow at the same rate. For so long, they've grown unequally. So we have this 3.04, and we're forecasting it to go to 3.20, 3.3. What happens if we move in the other direction?
If, if, just a suggestion, again, you may be modifying it, but the concept that Hillary and her staff put forward for the summit would certainly be to launch a series of discussions. And so you could raise these kinds of issues and questions, but one of the very first ones on the list was, post-summit work sessions would be on growth management strategies as an example, where it seems to me this kind of more granular discussion would be where you'd want to be getting into that sort of detail.
Yeah, my idea is it's just one of three or four that we might present to them. But if we don't present them with something soon, May 30th, they will take off on their own. own. Okay, I guess there is not a second for it, so let me move to Councilmember DeBois.
So I think I appreciated the concept behind that motion, was just trying to think about what it meant. But I think, again, that discussion about growth management definitely needs to be a big part, the summit and post-summit. Hang on one second. So we talked a little bit about council involvement, but we didn't really talk in any detail. We did identify this as one of our priorities for the year, and so I think we should talk about how that occurs, whether it's the meeting of the council as a whole group, or we form a council committee on the comp plan update. I'd like to see us touch base. I think it should be monthly, similar to other efforts, and in order, if there's Citizens' Working Group, I think it probably needs to be about that often, just to keep up with them. So I'm not going to propose one way or the other, but I think we need to talk about that. I like Jim's comment on painting a picture for comparisons, and again, that's what I was trying to suggest earlier when I talked about maybe some kind of framework that looks at different dimensions that you could line up against the themes, so not just looking at the themes, but trying to evaluate against some kind of rubric. And again, for me, one that made sense was kind of core services, which I think there'll be a lot of agreement on, schools, traffic, safety, neighborhoods, versus kind of improvements, making the city better, which to me would be changes to our transportation, sustainability, retail diversity, housing supply, and versus some of the external things that are in the elements, like our global reputation, attracting startups, being a regional destination. So again, I'm just suggesting that as a framework, but I think if there's other frameworks, you know, the other idea was comparisons to other cities, but something to really let people feel it and be able to evaluate things, rather than having it be too abstract. I agree with what Councilmember Phil Seth said, we need to try to quantify some of the parts, and what I think I heard him say was, we need to look at the relationships and dependencies between some of these things, not just getting raw data, independent data points, but how are those data points related? And it may not be a firm relationship, like Councilmember Berman was saying, but there is still a relationship there, and, you know, we're going to try to mitigate it and make that relationship better for us, but again, some first-order modeling of that, I think, would be good. This is a really minor point, but I know the Parks and Rec Commission's been working on a Parkmaster Plan. That, that I should dovetail, I think, with the natural environment element, it's a lot fresher. And getting back to this quantitative idea, you know, they've identified that we've fallen behind on the amount of parks. So that's an example where I think the comp plan should be trying to quantify, what does that mean, you know, if we're going to try to expand our parks? So all these themes are important, and, you know, I think it'd be a good exercise to force ourselves to try to rank them, and that's not to say that, you know, that one's not important at all. I think they're all important to a degree. So I went ahead and did my ranking, and for me, building, building community neighborhoods would be number one, maintaining and enhancing community character would be number two, and then meeting the housing supply challenge would be number three. And then kind of next down the list would be protecting and repairing the natural features, meeting our residential commercial needs, and reducing reliance on the automobile would be number six. And so again, it's not to say it's not important, it's just if you're forced to rank them, how would you do it? And it's actually pretty tough. And then last for me would be providing responsive governance and regional leadership. And that's really, I guess, a mix of two concepts. I mean, you know, I think we need to have responsive governance, that on its own would be higher, but again, if I was forced to, to rank them, that's where I'd end up. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks. I just wanted to pull briefly on, on a thread that actually Councilmember Wolback, I think, started pulling, and hopefully we won't unravel the whole sweater here. But, you know, I think, of course, you talked about in terms of, you know, we, we haven't met our goals in terms of housing and getting people out of cars, and I think it brings up sort of an interesting, an interesting split between, as we look around, you know, what we think we could do better in our city, right? How much is because, you know, the comp plan doesn't address it? And how much is because the comp plan really does kind of address it, but for one reason or another, we haven't followed the comp plan, right? And, you know, some of these things, and I think, you know, the park example is, may or may not be the most important, but it's easily, easy to quantify, right? The comp plan says we should have three or four acres of park space per thousand residents, and we today have 2.6 or 2.7 or something like that. So what's the remedy? So if we go off track and get sideways from the comp plan, what's our recourse? You know, on the park example, right, should we change the plan? Should we buy more land? You know, what should we do, right? And maybe the answer is as simple as, well, it's, you know, as long as it's in the municipal code, right, then it's a non-issue, right? But one of the things that seems to me that we ought to think about is, as we're doing this, we ought to think about, okay, what do we, what do we do if we get off track? And what's, what's the course correction plan? Throwing stuff out here. Okay?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt.
Few follow-ups. So first, Councilmember Phil Seth talked about quantitative measures, and I think there will be opportunities where we can quantify, and, and there may be others where we will have qualitative descriptions. So right now, we kind of have a binary, we're either going to do this or not do this, but we don't say, "How much? Are we going to do a lot of it, a medium amount, or a lot?" So, excuse me, a little, a medium amount, or a lot. So I think we'll, we'll want to look at where that kind of ranking is appropriate, as well as a comparative ranking that I think Councilmember DeBois was talking about. I do want to talk a little bit about the council process, because we really haven't gone there, and what, what role are we going to have at, at what times and at what elevation? So this is a fairly high-level discussion here, and I think we, we're, we're seeing some, some consensus forming, but we need to have a lot more discussion. It'll be informed by things like the summit. But I think also, we, we haven't established an opportunity so that the council's never commented in any kind of detail on the version that came out of the Planning Commission. I look back, and this was from probably close to a year ago, and I had a lot of comments that would be things that I would want to frame as considerations. So, well, this option came from the Planning Commission, and I would say, "Well, what about such and such consideration?" And toss it out for, I'm, I'm not saying that I want to try to ram home my recommendations in a motion in a rush basis, but I do think they, they and those of others of us will have merit to enter the conversation. And if we go and we have a summit, and you haven't had that feedback loop by those of us who have been very immersed in this in a long time, that may be a less valuable conversation that the community has than if we helped frame it. And I don't see a point between now and then that we're being asked to wade in at those levels. Another thought that I had was, on these themes, I think the current themes, some of them are somewhat overlapping, and as I mentioned before, not necessarily fully reflective of where we are today. And it got me thinking about, as I was looking at some of them, their, the, the relationship between these comp plan themes and what we are going to be, we were supposed to have addressed two years ago, but going to be addressing this year, which is our core values. And what's the relationship between the core values and the comp plan themes? And I suspect there should be a pretty good correlation there. They may not be one in the same, but they, they may be, the one influencing the other and informing the other. And that also got me thinking about, you know, as, talk about, we have the safety element, and we've adopted as a priority, healthy community. I suspect that that is something that we are adopting as a priority that will, once it's kicked off as, and pervading our programs, it'll become part of our enduring core values. And is that kind of a healthy community, are those elements, how do we unify them in the comp plan? You know, as we, we talk about urban environmental issues like noise and, and other elements that contribute, or other proactive things, even the way that that intersects with multimodal transportation and all those different things. So we're going to have to have a discussion about how those things interact with one I also was thinking about with our, there's this discussion about the zoning ordinance update moving somewhat in parallel with the comp plan. I think it's described as being in more in parallel than I think is possible, but maybe I'll be proven wrong on that. And either way, it got me thinking that, as Councilmember Phil Seth was talking about, we really have a couple different buckets on that. We have zoning ordinance update changes that would come about as a result of reflecting comp plan changes that are yet to be determined. We also have a whole group of zoning ordinance update changes that are actually in the midst and needed in order to more adequately implement the current comp plan. And so they're, not all the ZOU changes fall in that bucket of ones that would fulfill the new comp plan. And I don't know how we should treat those ones that we already know we want to address, but I, I think we should start by saying, "Okay, here's the group that we've already identified, here's the, these are these other ones that may become translated into zoning changes depending on what gets determined in the comp plan process." So that would help us just start looking at those and their relationship, and which one should be done when. I also have a question on the leadership group role. I've heard from members of the leadership group that they're, they are very much being asked to have a strong role in the community outreach, but that they would like a stronger role in the comp plan process itself. So in the determination of what would be the best community process, as opposed to sort of the execution of that. And so that's a deeper discussion, but I'd, I'd like to encourage that to occur. So I think, I'll just leave it by giving two examples of possible kind of reframing of a couple of the themes. One is on protecting and repairing natural resources, and I'm not attempting to offer final wording here by any means, but just kind of a draft rewording and what that might mean. I had down sustaining the quality of our natural and urban environments. I don't know, that's maybe something that would be a good discussion, what are the pros and cons, or something along that line. And then another one was reducing reliance on automobile. Is it more a positive statement of making a range of transportation modes equally available and attractive, or something that means something like that? Of course, we want to make these as concise as possible, and I think it's, Mark Twain said, you know, "If I had more time, I would have written a shorter letter," so if I had more time, I'd offer shorter themes here. But just to toss out for consideration, the kinds of evolution of our themes, in part, they're really not radical departures from what we had, but, but as we dig into it, we may see that the, the title actually has a different meaning and emphasis, even though it's not shifting 180 degrees by any means. So those are some additional thoughts. But I, I guess I would want to figure out where we're going as a council in this process, and I don't think we want to leave tonight without, either maybe, Hillary, if you've got a notion, or how do we proceed there?
Yeah, if I could just make a point, is we have promised the public that we would get to the bike bridge around this time, so our time on this is limited, and I guess so far we have no motions or directions to staff. So Hillary, do you want to?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Just briefly, I think this is a great line of discussion, how the council would like to be involved in light of the priority that you set for this year. If you review the staff report, you'll see that staff's proposal is to involve the council primarily at these kind of major issue points. We've started the discussion about growth management, we're continuing that discussion of the office R&amp;D growth management strategies at next week's meeting. Then shortly thereafter, we're going to be engaging in this discussion of retail preservation at the council level. So our thought was to continue your involvement at that kind of high-level issue stage where we'll, we'll fill the room with people who are far more interested in those issues than they are in, in wordsmithing themes. But if the council would like to also schedule sessions to go deeper into the words and the, you know, framework of the plan that's presented in the staff report, you know, we'd like to hear that tonight, and we'll have to, frankly, we'll have to work to get that on your agenda, that just is so, there's just limited time to bring these kind of discussions forward.
Okay, with the idea that we just have a few moments, let me turn to Councilmember Wolback.
Well, there were just a couple of things I was going to point out, some directly relevant to that, and one also that just popped up to me, and I don't know how I missed it before. Under reducing reliance on the automobile, it says, "New light rail is envisioned," along with a number of other things, and so that's one we, when, when we do, whether it's tonight or in the future, when we do get into, to the actual wordsmithing. I'm not sure we're still envisioning light rail in Palo Alto, not sure we're not, not sure we are, but I think we should probably talk about that. As far as the calendar goes, I, I think, and I'd be happy to hear other's thoughts, but I think maybe we should provide some level of clarity on what we're thinking as far as the calendar goes. You know, do we want to maintain the current calendar we're on, which it's first quarter 2016 for completion of the comp plan, right? That's our current goal?
That was the last schedule that we discussed with the council, yeah.
Right. So I think, well, I guess the question is, do we need to give direction or redirection to staff regarding the calendar, or the themes, or the process for engaging either the public or the leadership group, or both? Do we want to provide some clear guidance tonight?
If you do.
May I, may I respond, take a stab at that? I know it sort of was asked of the council. If, might I just? So I think you've had a very good discussion, as an observer here watching this, okay? And I think the worst thing you could do right now was try to tie all this up in some motions or something and talking about them right now. You're not done with this, this conversation. So I think that the, the last question Councilmember Burt asked is probably the most relevant, which is, where are you going as a council right now? I mean, there were different comments about, should we have a subcommittee, you know? How could we have other conversations before the summit? Clearly, your schedule is set as far as the summit and the sort of post-summit period. My own, my own, and what I'm hearing from the council is, you're thinking about, and might be very much biased towards having an elongated schedule than the one we have right now as it relates to 2016. But I don't think that's as important of a decision for you to make as to what happens next between now and the summit, which is, we've got to identify some other council sessions with the council between now, which is the middle of March, and this thing at the end of May, to come back and refine some of these thoughts. So I mean, I hate to say it, but it's almost as much as just turning back to us, to come back with some suggestions, whether it's, what's a venue for some of the language issues versus the, the, the priorities of the themes, or those sort of things, so that as we go to the summit, there's some sense, both within the council and with the public, looking at the council, sort of say, "Ah, we can see what, what the council is sort of steering towards a bit." And I think that, that could inform the next steps that we make, rather than saying, "Let's lay out 10 more steps." I would just say that you direct us to come back with some suggestions for other
I would just say that you direct us to come back with some suggestions for other engagements with the council around some of these different concepts you surfaced today between now and the meeting on the summit. And then you're not going to reschedule the summit, I think, in any view right now, but you may frame that somewhat differently between now and then.
Councilmember DeBois.
In that spirit, I'll attempt to make a motion. I would move that the council has a deeper discussion on the comp plan overarching goals and the vision statement for each element.
And? Timeframe?
I'm open to timing. There are suggestions. I'd like to have that discussion. I don't know if it needs to happen pre-summit or it could happen post-summit. I mean, right now we have, we have retail preservation California Avenue. I don't know if that needs to happen pre-summit. Maybe this discussion on overarching goals and vision statement for each element could happen before the summit.
Through the chair, if I can, if I can respond to that, the staff report identifies retail preservation and then in parentheses, California Avenue, but that predated council's last direction to us to come back for discussion of interim ordinance for retail preservation citywide. So that's what's coming back to you after your discussion next week of growth management strategy. So those are big, too big.
Yeah, so those, that's on the schedule.
That's right. Those are two big issue discussions that are happening in the next four weeks or so. I don't know whether Councilmember DeBois's motion is then requesting that subsequent to that, we schedule another discussion of overarching the vision and goals for each element?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't prescribing a timeframe if, I mean, if there's room to do it before the summit, it would be great. And then it was, David, it was the vision statement for each element.
I'll second that. If that's, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to talk further to your motion?
No, I think, I think we've discussed it enough.
Councilmember Burt?
I would just offer an amendment that we add in the council and the comp plan process. I mean, we said, okay.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
I just wanted to ask a question. Is the California Avenue item still on the agenda or are we replacing that with something?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The Cal Ave discussion, is that, is that still scheduled for a couple, three weeks from now?
We're looking at retail preservation citywide. Cal Ave would be the first area we suggest looking at specifically after that.
Okay, so Tom's motion doesn't replace that.
The citywide retail issue has already displaced that, but then subsequent to citywide retail preservation, we would come back with California Avenue as soon as we could.
Okay. I think we need to get to California Avenue ASAP and I would argue it takes priority over this. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Wallback.
So my one big question about the motion is, my sense is that the next time we talk about this, rather than going bigger or deeper, that our next discussion should be actually more specific in providing maybe a little bit more detailed guidance to staff, particularly on process things like calendar, community outreach, utilization of the, of the leadership So I'm not sure if we want it, and I'm not sure if that's captured by this motion or if we should amend this motion to identify that because I think that when this comes back to council before the summit, we should provide some more precise guidance. But I'm happy to hear her other thoughts.
I kind of like just having it as the comp plan process. I'm not sure we need to set the entire schedule before the summit itself.
Yeah, and I would agree.
And if I might add, and the process would potentially include any guidance on the
So just so we have a really productive conversation when this comes back, is it implied to staff in your next staff report that when this comes back, maybe you'd offer some suggestions about the process so that we maybe have some things to pick from, at least to get our brains geared up to return and offer some more process guidance? Or am I overthinking this?
Through the chair, you know, I confess we've been vague because we haven't worked everything out about how the post-summit community work sessions will be structured. If the council's intention is to weigh in before the summit on how they'd like those discussions to be organized, I think that would be absolutely terrific. I mean, now is the point at which the staff and the consultants and the leadership group are trying to put those pieces together so that we can clearly articulate at the summit what people are signing up for.
Right. And so my question is, in order that our next discussion is productive, should we provide more detailed direction to staff now to come back with at least some proposed options regarding process or should we just leave it simple as is? I'm just worried we don't have time now. Okay. Yeah, so I guess it's just incumbent upon all of us to really start thinking about some details about process so that that next conversation will be productive. And that again comes back to our job as council to provide the clear guidance to you.
Okay, I see no other lights, so let's move on the question which is before us. All in favor? That passes unanimously, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item number six on the agenda, which is a review of the Adobe Creek Pedestrian
Another item, it's going to be a visual presentation here. So we're going to see quite a presentation on this bridge, on this project. There's been a competition and it's a pedestrian bridge over Adobe Creek. So we'll see where that goes. We have an interesting, we've had an interesting evening so far. We've had a discussion on the comp plan, the future of the comp plan and how that fits in. Also, earlier before the meeting, there was a presentation with the marathon.
Okay, if you'll get up and stretch for five minutes. So let's come back at nine forty-eight.
Event here in Palo Alto. It's Monday night coverage live. We're going to be back next week for more coverage of the Palo Alto City Council. Then on the 30th, we'll be off, but we'll be back that first Monday in April for more coverage of Democracy in Action. And we also have tonight a closed session in which, at the end of the evening, which is, deals with property negotiations, dealing with that U.S. Post Office, that historic post office at 380 Hamilton Avenue. And that'll be interesting with the United States Post Office, their negotiators and of course, the Palo Alto negotiators, James Kane Lalo Perez and Joe Saccio and a group of others. And then there's also a public employment dealing with the city clerk. That's also a closed session as well. We're also having a colleagues memo tonight of Bert Schmidt and Wallback regarding the strengthening of city engagement with neighborhoods. So it'll be great to hear from various neighborhoods. But coming up now is the review of the Adobe Creek Pedestrian Cyclist Bridge 2014 Design Competition Process and Outcome. Authorization to proceed with contract negotiations to develop a scope of work and cost for basic design services necessary to complete a joint California Quality, Environmental Quality Act, National Environmental Policy Act review for the Adobe Creek Pedestrian and Cyclist Bridge. All right, and of course, earlier in the night, so it's sort of a fitness night, we started with a runner. We're going to have cyclists now, so that's exciting. Presentation of a proclamation earlier in the evening was with exchange students from Chichara and the presentation of the marathon participant, Matt Schlegel was a marathon runner. That was interesting. Whereas exchange programs within middle schools and sister city programs, the foundation of the sister city program, in order to promote international and intercultural understanding amongst youth, the city of Palo Alto, California and Chichara City in Ibaraka, Japan have worked together to involve respective middle school students and their families in education and cultural exchanges that involve special programs. The opportunity to host Chichara students in Palo Alto and to send Palo Alto students to Chichara has proven to be a mutual benefit relationship. The city of Palo Alto thanks Chichara City for their generosity and hospitality aimed toward young people for the last 19 years. The mayor of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim our heartfelt welcome and recognition and congratulations to Mr. Etsuo Sato, Mrs. Kamiko Kikuchi and their 16 students, Konen Karakawa, Yumiko Omuma, Misuho Komai, Rusei Tari, Hina Toga, Suzuki Katamora, Mia Utsugi, Takumi Sato, Nayoka Sato, Ri Takahashi, Akane Sakamoto, Shuma Nemoto, Runa Harasai, Sunuya Tanaka, Maya Ozeki and Yukotaki. And that was a great moment for Vice Mayor Schmidt. Vice Mayor Schmidt has filled in, this is the second week in a row he's filled in. Mayor Holman is out of town and well, Greg Schmidt's doing a great job. He has, kind of has a homey feel to doing it. He's got the sweater up there, kind of, kind of has a little Mr. Rogers feel there. Feels good. I want to, I want to call in and make a pledge to public television, but this isn't, this is sort of like public television. It is Democracy in Action, KZSU Stanford. And you're getting, you're getting the best of it right here tonight. But Greg Schmidt has a nice, has a nice touch up there. Thanks everyone for coming. It's a nice feeling. He ran last week's meeting very, very, very well and seems to be doing a great job tonight. So it's a big moment for him. He's been working hard on the council and this is kind of neat. We're going to have some presentations coming up on this and some media presentations. I think that's what they're doing right now. They're, they're going over that and taking a look at what is happening. Now, next week, we'll be back. There's a pre-meeting, Presentation to Development Services Department regarding recognition of achievement by the International Standards Organization for its administering the building codes, attaining the highest standards for structural safety. That's a special orders pre-meeting. Then an update from the Santa Clara Valley Water District's collection of all of its state water projects via property taxes instead of water rates. Then there's several items on the consent calendar and then discussion and direction to staff regarding establishment of office and R and D annual growth limit. We heard about this last week or actually two weeks ago for March 2nd on that annual R and D growth limit and where they're going to go with that. An approval of a residential curbside compost collection program, adopting a budget amendment ordinance of $387,000 for the purchase of kitchen buckets and new outreach materials. So those are the two big action items next week, the R and D growth limit and the curbside collection program. There's also a closed session with the Santa Clara Valley Water District funding of state water projects. Then we're, that's the 23rd, then no broadcast on the 30th, then we are back, we are back in April to kick things off on April 6th, which I think is opening day for baseball, which is great, opening day for the A's and the Giants. I think the A's are home and the Giants are away, but cost of services update, draft, user free recovery level policy discussion, the study session, special orders of the day, selection of applicants to interview on April 20th, 2015 for Human Relations Commission, Public Art Commission, Utility Advisory Commission, public hearing, Tefra Acquisition Rehabilitation of 120-Unit Multi-Family Rental Housing Facility for Seniors located at 455 East Charleston Road in the city of Palo Alto, known as Stevenson House. And then there's also a closed session.
And turn to item number six, review of Adobe Creek Pedestrian. Director Sardar, do you want to kick off?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt. I'm Mike Sardar and members of city council, I'm sorry. I'm Mike Sardar, the Public Works Director. Wanted to do a brief introduction here of staff and consultants that have been involved in this process for the Adobe Creek Highway 101 Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge. So Brad Eggleston to my right here is Assistant Director and he'll be leading the presentation tonight. We also have in the audience Elizabeth Ames, our project manager. We also have Margie O'Driscoll from the American Institute of Architects, California Council, who led the design competition for us. We have Judy Wasserman, former ARB member and Chair of the jury that actually did the jury process for the design competition. And both, both Margie and Judy will be giving us a brief explanation of the process that was gone through. And then you'll be hearing from the two design teams, Team A and Team C. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Brad.
One question upfront, the ask from the, for, from the council is a review. Are you looking for an action step beyond review?
We have made a recommendation that you direct staff to proceed with negotiations for concept design and environmental review with the winner of the competition. You also have an option of directing us to go with another team or do a request for proposals as an alternative solution. So you do have those choices and that is in your recommendation in the staff report.
Good. Brad?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt and council. We're excited to be here this evening at the end of what's been a kind of long, interesting and I hope fruitful process of this design competition. I wanted to briefly outline what we're thinking the process will be here this evening since it's a bit unusual for our presentations, but we'll have a brief introduction and then we'll ask Team C, which is the Moffett and Nickel Team to, we'll show their video that was provided for the competition and then we'll ask them to provide a 15-minute presentation on their submission to the council.
That's in addition to the video?
Yes. And then analogous, the same thing for Team A, which is the HNTB team. I do want to point out right at the start here that teams have discussed things, potential changes they might make to their designs. We've asked both of the teams that in their presentations, they're to begin with the original design that was submitted and then be sure they're discussing anything that they might be proposing to make a change or revision to point that out to the council. So then we'll hear from the competition jury chair, Judith Wasserman, about the jury process and their decision. And then we thought that we would take public comments, and I know there's a number of interested people to comment, and then get to the council questions and consideration. So a little bit of background about the project. This slide shows some photos. It shows the location of the proposed bridge, which is just downstream of Barron and Adobe Creeks, downstream of the Confluence. It also, if you look at the upper left corner, shows the entrance to the undercrossing to Adobe Creek, which as you know, is currently closed for about six months of each year due to wet weather as it currently is. And primarily for that reason, the city began doing a feasibility study in 2010 to look for a location for a new year-round crossing of Highway 101. And this area at Adobe Creek was identified as being the best location for a new crossing. This project became the top priority in the 2012 Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation Plan. And since that time, staff has been working more or less continuously on the preliminary design and early environmental review aspects. Since then, the project has also secured $8 million in grant funding and had the remaining $2 million funding provided by the city. A piece of that, 1.7 million, is a part of the council infrastructure plan that was a adopted last June. And I think you'd also be interested to hear that very recently, we were told by VTA that we've been allocated an additional $300,000 of grant funding for the project. So that's kind of brand-new news. So over the past months, starting really last spring, we were working on this design competition process. We vetted guiding principles and the competition process with various boards and commissions and with the council. You may recall that we were last before you to talk about those matters in September of last year. So that's my quick introduction to the project. And now I'd like to introduce Margie O'Driscoll of the American Institute of Architects, California Council, who will come up to describe the competition process. She's the one that managed the competition for us.
It's wonderful to be back in front of some of you, but not all of you. So there's some new faces greeting us. I guess the first question, especially for the newer members of the council, is why bother doing a competition? Why not just use the normal process that the city has? And I guess, and I came into the process once a decision had been made, but I spent a lot of time talking to people about why bother going to this extra work. And the feeling was that we live in a beautiful community here in Palo Alto, and how can we make sure that architectural innovation and great design continues to happen and is a hallmark and a trademark for our community? So you might say, well, what are great projects that have arisen out of a competition? Well, San Francisco City Hall, the Eiffel Tower, the Millennium Bridge in London, and the Cantor Center at Stanford University were all the result of a competition, not exactly as we did our competition here, but this idea that you could reach out to a broad community and get great ideas from around the world. And that was, in fact, what we were charged with doing. As your representative here at the AI California Council, we were charged with doing an international competition. We reached out to about 60 firms, all of whom had met a minimum criteria of having designed and completed a bridge within the last 10 years. So it was very much a concern of the city council that we have experienced people and people who had delivered projects on time and could talk about not just constructibility, but also finances. So we reached out to these firms around the world and we had 20 firms give us qualifications. And then we convened a jury to look at these 20 submissions and to hone the list down to three firms. Interestingly enough, while we had a broad reach around the world of firms responding, all three of the firms that were chosen to actually come up with designs all had very strong local roots, which was really a wonderful byproduct, but not necessarily something that we had expected. We gave the people who submitted qualifications for guiding principles, and these are really important, and even though they are in your packets, I think it's worth me actually saying them back to you. We were looking for innovation, inspiration, and engagement with the community, with a current-era design. And we thought a lot about the word "current era" because people thought, is this iconic? Is this landmark? What are we looking for? People wanted something that spoke to our time, in this moment in time, that incorporates creativity, originality, functionality, technology, education, but that's also identifiable as a landmark for this community. That it had to be versatile. It had to achieve a balance between engineering and art, efficiency and beauty, and a diversity of users and functionality. Remember, this is for pedestrians and bicyclists as well, and there is the obvious interaction of people driving underneath Highway 101. And it also has to meet construction budget. It has to respect the delicate ecosystem of the baylands, recognize integration with nature, connect to the bay trails, be an important place to both view nature and also accommodate all these different users, and recognize universal accessibility. It had to look at bird-friendly design science and guidelines and develop an innovative approach to the management of the native and non-native predator species, especially in the baylands. That's a lot of things for any team to have to accomplish. And it was very exciting to see the results of all of the teams in looking at trying to come up with innovative solutions that were budget-sensitive to meet the needs of your community. So based on that criteria, we developed a group of jury members, several local and several from out of town. So we had Kathy Deano Blake, who is the head of the Landscape Department at Stanford University, because the council felt that it was very important to have a voice from the Stanford community. We had Steve Burrows, who's well-known on television for doing a show on structures. He's a very well-known engineer, excuse me, who was knighted by the Queen, which we couldn't help but tease him about mercilessly. We had Susan Chin, who was a city commissioner for the Arts Department in New York City and the Vice President of the National AIA. And we had Sam Lubell, who's the editor of the Architects Newspaper. And finally, Judith Wasserman, an architectural leader here in our community as well. So this jury met, honed that list down of 20, down to three. As part of the process, we wanted to look for deep community engagement. So we asked, for the first time that I'm ever aware of, for the teams to develop a YouTube video that was on the city's website that got a lot of play and a lot of interest, I think. I'm pleased to say that's now been adopted by a number of other competitions around the country, so you can claim the first in that. Also, we did an exhibition. You can see some of the boards. That's what we call these sort of architectural posters in the back of the room. Those were at the library. Within five minutes of them being at the library, we watched librarians, parents, and children all standing around talking about the new bridge, which is exactly what we wanted to see happen. And then we convened a technical advisory committee to give feedback for a final jury hearing. The technical advisory committee said that the HNTB, which is the second proposal that you see today, was the scheme that most met all the criteria that we had established for them. And so then, once we had the jury come together here and meet with the ARB in December, so that at that time, they looked at the technical advisory panels, recommendations, and their advice about constructibility, design, and the other criteria. We convened the ARB and the jury together. The ARB served as advisors. The full jury was the actual people who voted. And the jury made a unanimous decision for the HNTB team to be chosen as the design team to go forward with conversation about... The ARB was advisory at that point, and there was a majority, although it was not unanimous at that time, to support the HNTB team. So at that point, at that moment, the competition was ended. And from there, the city went through a very rigorous process of going to, I think, five or six other city departments. And I'll turn that back over to Brad to describe how that process went from there.
Thank you, Margie.
So as Margie was describing, following the outcome of the competition, we visited most of the city boards and commissions to get their feedback and comments. Kind of a rapid tour to five different groups that all took place in the month of January. And so following that, we're here before the council. The staff recommendation is to proceed with the design and environmental review work with the HNTB team. That's the Team A that developed the arch design for the competition. That recommendation is really based on the jury decision and discussions about things like cost and constructibility that took place during the jury discussion and the feedback that we received from those various boards and commissions that we visited in January. Another thing I wanted to say, we also want to acknowledge the comments that we've been hearing, received from the public and environmental groups about the concerns with safety of birds that could concern to accompany that bridge. And our recommendation of proceeding with the HNTB team is not meant to downplay or ignore any of those concerns in any way. And we're committed to have a design process that would coordinate with the bird safety advocates to be sure that we end up with an eventual design that will be safe for birds. So I think that takes us... This is really just a statement of the recommendation that's in the report. One thing I wanted to make clear about that recommendation, what we're wanting to do at this time is to go and negotiate the design work that would be needed to take us through the environmental review process. So what we would be coming back to the council with is a contract that takes us to a certain percent of design. We're not quite positive yet what that will be. It would not be a contract for the, you know, 100% design of the bridge that would take us all the way to the construction. And with that, I wanted to touch on another thing. One thing we've noted, there's been a lot of discussion about the heights of the bridge designs and how those relate to the design guidelines that were issued for the competition. And the design guidelines discuss potential visual impacts in one section, and then they suggest that there are strategies for avoiding negative impacts that you could have. And just to make sure everybody's really clear about that, I actually wanted to take a moment and read that portion of the design guidelines, if you don't mind. So what they say is, "Limit unnecessary vertical elements east of Highway 101 near the baylands by maintaining a maximum height of 35 feet from ground level to the top of the east ramp structure, which is consistent with the average height of adjacent tree canopies and buildings." And then it also says, "Limit potential vertical towers associated with a signature bridge design to West Bay Shore Road and to a maximum height of 65 feet, consistent with highest allowable building elements according to adjacent zoning." So I wanted to point out, we didn't feel that the guidelines were establishing any maximum height for a bridge over Highway 101. And as we understood them, all three of the submissions did meet those guidelines. So just wanted to point that out. And with that, I think we're ready to get started with the presentations from the teams, starting with the video from the Moffett and Nichol's Team C.
The Palo Alto Baylands are a vast landscape, a visual feast of forms and colors, of sights and smells, a place of biological magic that happens when salt and fresh water mix. This project is located at a special spot, at the confluence of two creeks. It will connect natural and urbanized environments. And it's at the transition zone between two biomes. The flowing lines, low-profile structure, and architectural materials evoke the forms and colors of the baylands. The result is a design that is beautiful and dramatic, yet respectful of context, timelessly modern, bird-friendly, cost-effective, and easy to construct. Let's take a virtual tour of the project. Along the bay trail just north of Adobe Creek, you discover a small touchdown plaza. Native sycamores along the creek help give shape to this outdoor place. On the wetland side, rings of native plants surround the plaza and draw your eye to the bayland's horizon. You might stop and sit in the shade and watch people, or wander closer to restored wetland areas, discovering how different plant species make their homes at different elevations. Perhaps you notice how the rich earth tones of the bridge structure and lighter tones of the walking surfaces are derived from colors in the natural bayland setting. You discover beautiful artwork in the plaza surface, which was inspired by shapes of local plants. The east approach structure sweeps out and up from the plaza in a dramatic curving form that appears to float without any visible means of support over the wetlands. You are invited by this sweeping form to make your way up a gently sloping pathway. As you emerge from the riparian tree canopy, you are struck by an expansive view of the Here, the slow lane of the pathway widens to allow you to pause for a moment or sit down and rest. Small signs tell you about plants and animals that live below, how the railing is designed to avoid perching spots for predatory birds, and how the stainless steel mesh was selected to prevent bird collisions. As you reach the top, you notice that the stainless steel pipe railing on your left rises to a high point above the edge of the roadway and then swoops down gracefully to a low point at the center of the bridge, serving both architectural and structural functions. As you enter the fenced span over the freeway, perhaps the interplay of flowing lines of the bridge structure evoke contextual landscape forms. These lines and a slight increase in width toward the center of the span shape the space, so you experience the main span as a place and not just a tunnel-like passageway. At the west end of the main span, you might choose to take stairs which swoop down to the sidewalk. Or you might pause at the lookout over Barron Creek. When you reach the touchdown plaza on the west side, you notice that the lane lines and colors of the pathway extend gracefully out into the concrete scoring pattern and walking surface artwork. Indeed, the trees and grasses, architectural materials, forms, textures, and artwork which create this pedestrian-friendly urban street space on the west side, all come from the bayland side, much as species intermingle at the transition zone between two biomes. Perhaps you pause at the west touchdown plaza to look over the creeks or sit on a bench, or you continue on the Adobe Creek Reach multi-use pathway or the bike lane along West Bay Shore Road. The Moffett and Nichol SGA team is prepared to deliver a Silicon Valley landmark, a statement of Palo Alto's commitment to the natural environment, to a beautiful urban environment, and to quality of life in the Bay Area.
Let's see, two things. It might be helpful to identify clearly the name of the group so that everyone, council members, and audience will use that throughout the discussion. What is the preferred name, title that we should use?
I would prefer to refer to the Moffett and Nichol team, which is this team that's prepared to present to you now, and to the HNTB team.
Okay. Moffett and Nichol. And you have 18 minutes for your presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Is that right?
I think we were talking about 15 minutes.
15. Sorry.
The Palo Alto Baylands are a vast landscape, a visual feast of forms and colors, of sights and smells, a place of biological magic that happens when salt and...
Okay. You sure you don't want to give me 18 minutes, huh? Well, good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'm Gary Antonucci, the project manager of the Moffett-Nichol SGA team, and we are quite honored to be one of the finalists for your bridge competition. And we also were quite honored with the high marks that your technical advisory panel gave our submission. As you may know, that panel was made up of several people that had experience in bridge design and construction, and they gave us very high marks for... design and construction, and they gave us very high marks for cost and constructability, unlike actually the jury, which didn't have bridge specialists on it. Our concept was developed and vetted by two world-class bridge engineers that we'll be telling you about. And really, though, the inspiration of our team is Steven Grover, our architect. Steven is unique in that he is both an engineer and an architect. He started his career designing bridges, rather dams, in Turkey and elsewhere around the world, but lately he's become an expert in pedestrian bicycle bridges. He's been responsible for some of the most recognizable pedestrian bicycle projects here in the Bay Area. And with that, I'm going to ask Steven to tell you about our submission.
Thank you, Gary. We have designed a beautiful, graceful, and unique suspension bridge for you. This bridge would be the first of its kind. What's unique about it? Well, it's a suspension bridge, but it actually supports itself during construction because it has a stiff deck. There are no cables used, and a single tension member serves two structural functions, vertical support of the main span and torsional support of the side spans. But bragging rights aside, what I want to ask you tonight is, what makes a project like this truly successful? Is it visual character? Yes, that's very important, obviously. We offer you a visual presence that is timeless and elegant. These are new renderings. You haven't seen them before. I want to mention that the only design change that we've made since we presented to the jury was to refine our fencing design so it's more consistent with the overall architectural vocabulary, a more curvy vocabulary. We offer you a design which is dramatic, yet context-appropriate. The visual experience of the user is also quite important. Our fencing design, as I said, has been refined. And just so you can see how this fencing material looks on an actual bridge, this is a bridge I designed in North Carolina, it uses the same material that we're proposing for your bridge. What about cost? Is that important? Yes, you've made it clear that meeting a budget is a priority. If cost were all that mattered, then a standard box bridge would do the job. Unfortunately, a standard concrete bridge cannot meet your visual design goals and would impact the Baylands more than other alternatives because it would require more supports and bigger foundations. Moreover, a concrete bridge would be thicker and thus taller, so the ramps that you would have to squeeze into your constrained site geometry would have even more wiggles in them, which would reduce safety. The good news is, our design achieves your visual, environmental, and geometric goals while retaining many of the cost-related benefits of a conventional girder bridge. While our suspension bridge structural system is very innovative, the construction methods and materials needed to build it are about as tried and true as you can possibly imagine. Any contractor bidding on this job would feel comfortable with our design because they would not need to apply a premium for specialty subcontractors or the uncertainty associated with non-standard construction methods. What about safety? Is that important for your project? You've made it clear that it is. Most accidents happen on curves, so design standards, including those written specifically for this project, call for large radius curves with clear, open sightlines, such as we have provided in our design. This is because for both cars and bikes, the tighter or longer the turn, the more difficult it is to stay in control. This is why we have used large radii and have avoided ramps that loop over themselves. This type of looping ramp design was popular in the '50s and '60s because it is very space-efficient, but it's no longer considered state-of-the-art due to safety considerations. Achieving the best safety for all user types calls for a mode separation method that is simple, intuitive, and works even if there's no signage. We are proposing a pathway configuration that I introduced for the Berkeley Bike Bridge 18 years ago, and then also used again when I designed your Homer Avenue underpass. This is now a proven and successful approach that has become a design reference. We also recognize that creating a small mixing zone at the bottom of ramps reduces the chance of conflicts at intersections. With a simple T-intersection, cyclists coming off the end of a ramp have to navigate a sharp turn at the same time as they look out for cross-traffic. What about environmental sensitivity? You've clearly considered this also a priority for your project. We have designed a bridge without cables, not just because cables are expensive, but because they present a hazard to birds. In fact, the competition design guidelines explicitly said to avoid cables. Now, your project is relatively unique in that it requires a full environmental impact report. This requirement was likely triggered because a bridge at the Adobe Creek location will impact views of a scenic vista. So we have designed a bridge that follows all of the visual impact guidelines, both for the Baylands and specifically designed for this project. So for your EIR, you can have confidence that we will be able to demonstrate that the suspension bridge design alternative has the least environmental impact of all viable alternatives. For the side span over the wetlands, we have minimized shading from the ramp overhead, and we have completely eliminated the need for structural supports in the wetland area. Our lighting scheme lights only the traveled way and avoids upward light pollution as well as spill over to the sensitive habitat below. What about getting the project done? That's also an important priority, isn't it? The community wants to be able to use this and use it soon. Our design has been recognized by your technical advisory panel, specialists in bridge, process, and design, as the one which could obtain Caltrans approval most easily. And clearly, we would also have the easiest time with the environmental review. Ultimately, what makes a project like this successful is balance, balance between all the important goals. It's not just a matter of bundling features. The best design is one that balances these goals and avoids overemphasizing any particular goal, such as visual presence, for example, at the expense of others. For this project, the best design is the one you see now on your screen, and that's because, number one, you can have confidence that your approval processes will go very smoothly. Number two, you can have confidence that you have selected the lowest-cost alternative that meets your goals. Number three, you can have confidence that the geometrics are proven and safe. And finally, number four, you have a visual statement that speaks of the innovation and refinement that is Palo Alto, yet respects the scenic resource and sensitive habitat of its Baylands' context. Now I'd like to introduce Tony. Tony is an incredibly talented engineer, fantastic engineer to work with, and he's also a former bridge contractor.
You have about five minutes.
Thank you, Steven. So I'd like to jump right in and talk about how the structure works. So here's our bridge here. We're spanning 235 feet over, clear-spanning the freeway and the frontage roads. And the main load-carrying member is a steel box girder. It's one of the most simple and cost-effective types of bridges you can have. Now, to keep the girder thin and light, we're using external post-tensioning to accomplish that. So this is a system that's used in, it's become popular over the past 20 years or so. It's a hybrid between a girder and a cable-supported bridge. It's known as an extrados bridge, used in major bridges all over the world. And this technology has come into favor because it helps to save money. So we're doing something similar here with our bridge. So we have this tension member. The tension member is actually a seven-inch diameter steel pipe with common prestressing strand inside, very common materials, common construction methods. And it's connected to the steel box girder, not with cables, but with steel plates. Cables and anchorages are what tend to drive up the cost of a cable bridge. So we're getting past that, making it the system economical by using a steel pipe with steel plates connected to the steel box. So we have the steel box girder on both sides of the deck, connected with floor beams. On top of that, we'll put a concrete deck. And the beauty of our system is because we have a stiff deck system, we're designing that to take 100% of the dead load, so we can build the bridge without any false work. This greatly simplifies the construction procedure and greatly reduces the cost. We build these components in the shop, then deliver pieces to the site, we'll do some splicing on the site, and then we can erect the bridge with just a partial freeway closure. We would close the northbound lanes of the freeway overnight for a few hours while we do that pick, and then reverse the process and do it on the southbound lanes. Once we have the superstructure in place, then we pour the concrete deck in situ and then post-tension the whole system. We've done quite a bit of engineering and analysis to show that this system works. It is a complicated geometry, but we have a handle on that. We have Gharat Kumar on our team. He's a world-class bridge analyst. He's in my office at Moffett and Nichol, and he's developed a model, a structural model of the bridge, and we've checked it for stresses, we've checked it for bending moments and deflections and vibrations, and we're well within code limits. Here are some results from our analysis. We also have Dr. Juri Strasky on our team. So Juri is an authority on specialty pedestrian bridges the world over. I've worked with him on several bridges in the recent past, and Juri has, he proposed some of these same concepts that we're going to incorporate in this bridge. He analyzed them, and then to show that they would work, before he went out and built them, he actually did tests in the laboratory to confirm his analysis. And then he's built several similar bridges. Here's a self-anchored suspension bridge in Spain that Juri designed and opened recently. Here's one that I worked on with Juri. It's a self-anchored suspension bridge for pedestrians in San Diego. And we've had Gharat and Juri summarize their involvement with the project and their results, and that's included in the information handout. They each have produced a memo. Juri's gone through, and he helped us develop the concept, and then he's gone through and reviewed our details, and he's given it his approval for stresses, for vibrations, for everything. So it's all summarized in your memo in the handout.
We'll close by telling you once again, we're honored to be a finalist. I think we've shown you a concept that meets any possible interpretation of your design guidelines, has been vetted and endorsed by world-class bridge engineers, and we'd be very excited to deliver it for you and for the community.
Great, thank you very much for coming this evening. Brad, do you want to...
So now Hung will help us get the HNTB team video set to go.
For many years, the infrastructure of the automobile has created emissions, noise, and divisions in our communities. Palo Alto has instead embraced a more multimodal future, choosing walking and cycling, developing car sharing, and even self-driving vehicles. Palo Alto's Adobe Creek pedestrian and cyclist bridge is an opportunity to create a more multifunctional, forward-looking infrastructure. Drawn from the trajectories of the cyclists moving along it and the sinuous waterways of the bay, it is designed not as an icon, but as an experience. Here at the confluence of Adobe and Barron creeks, we can create an opportunity for experience, for beauty, and a deeper understanding of our natural world. West of Highway 101, the bridge ascends in a counterclockwise loop, arcing over the freeway before descending in a broad circle. To the east, a new gathering space provides a place to sit and take in the view, with amenities including bicycle repair. Encircled by the bridge is a new vernal pond and boardwalk, a new way to explore the Baylands. Recognizing the challenges of multiple users traveling the same route, the bridge creates dedicated zones for pedestrians and cyclists, lifting one above the other and separating them in plan. Over the freeway, the arch gestures to the sky, creating a cathedral-like space. More than a crossing, it is a space to pause and reflect. Twin pathways over the Baylands integrate structure within their solid interior rails, levitating over the sensitive landscape below, with piers nearly 100 feet apart. West of the freeway, bicycles are outboard, maximizing their turning radius. Here, pedestrians are oriented outward, the walkway expanding to provide a place for birdwatching, resting on a bench, and taking in the view. Structured as an arch, the bridge leans northward, counterposed to the deck, a network of thin cables between. A gateway over the freeway, this innovative structure is slender, structurally efficient, and cost-effective, with excellent seismic performance. It eliminates supports in the median and between US 101 and Bayshore, increasing safety and future flexibility. Constructed of corrosion-resistant weathering steel, its warm hues are sympathetic with the Baylands' natural palette. Our innovative approach extends to construction. Erected at a temporary location while foundation work is underway, the arch can then be rolled into place with self-propelled modular transports, reducing traffic disruption to a single nighttime closure. The landscape recognizes its strategic place in the broader watershed, leveraging its small footprint for larger-scale change through hydrologic and symbolic connection. Stormwater is captured from the bridge, bike path, and frontage road, treated and routed to a new basin. As this water mixes with seasonal groundwater and residual bay mud salinity, this vernal pool creates a new ecological niche. Overflowing gray water from a possible bathroom and drinking fountains can be recaptured in tanks concealed in the bridge abutments, irrigating vertical gardens of pollinator species flanking their sides. This site, like the rest of the bay, must address sea-level rise. The design anticipates this change, enabling future ecologies and habitats, and communicating the importance of resiliency. Bridge lighting is designed to conserve energy and be environmentally sensitive. Integrated sensors trigger white light in response to motion, guiding users along the pathway. From the freeway beneath, a jogger is visible as they approach, a comet's trail arcing overhead with the passing cyclist. Finally, a large-scale artwork is integrated into the bridge, utilizing technology to engage the natural phenomena of the site. Brushed stainless steel discs are fixed to the cable net, weather vanes swaying in the wind, deterring birds and ensuring their safety. Undulating with each gust and passing vehicle, they sparkle in the sun, an ineffable experience of motion and light. We look to places like Palo Alto for what is possible, for what is next for smart, forward-looking cities. We hope this new bridge can similarly be a model, a confluence uniting the community, the landscape of the bay, and your shared future.
Good, and you'll have 15 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Will Carson with 64 North Architecture. Thank you, Hung. Our team is led by HNTB Engineering, our nation's leader in bridge design, and experts at delivering designs on budget. Here at Mary Avenue in Cupertino, another team had designed a bridge that was doubly over-budget. HNTB delivered this beautiful design on budget and permitted it with Caltrans in just six weeks. Our team also includes my practice, 64... Our team also includes my practice, 64 North. Here's a bridge that broke ground this month in collaboration with HNTB. Bionic landscape architecture, one of the most innovative landscape practices in the country, based here in the bay. And we're also joined tonight by MacArthur Fellow and artist Ned Khan, whose work blends art and science in extraordinary ways. The defining opportunity for this project, as you defined it, is innovation. Cities around the world look to Palo Alto as a leader for forward-looking, smart design. This project can create a new paradigm for what infrastructure can do. These are the criteria that you asked our bridge to fulfill. The bridge we're sharing with you tonight is versatile, interconnected, provides for conservation, and is innovative in many ways. Why an arch? Having lived here in Palo Alto, running in the Baylands, I believe the defining characteristic of this extraordinary space, the Baylands, is its vast openness, its vistas stretching to the hills above Fremont. This bridge is located at a very important moment where the more dense urban fabric south of San Antonio opens up to this vista. The arch here forms a literal gateway from your city to the Baylands. We have designed this bridge to be as light and transparent as possible. Instead of seven solid feet of steel over the freeway, we instead have structural members and a bridge deck that are only 18 inches deep, the most slender structure possible. Over the Baylands, the structure is the lowest of the designs, just 18 feet at its highest point, with structure 100 feet apart. Over Highway 101, the arch and its cable net create a cathedral-like space gesturing skyward. We've integrated our required barrier here into the structure, providing unobstructed views in all directions. Also importantly, it's angled inward, ensuring that it cannot be climbed. Finally, this isn't just any arch. The bridge deck is curved, revealing itself as you approach, something that's made possible by this network arch structure, reflecting the sinuous contours of the Baylands. Why an arch? Our design spans not only US 101, but east and west Bay Shore. National research has shown the danger of truck impacts and the consequences for both vehicle safety and structural integrity. It's not only the central median, but those between US 101 and Bay Shore, where there's more truck traffic. There are also a number of important utilities which pass alongside, most importantly, a 30-inch PG&E gas main adjacent to the Bay Trail. Moving this could cost more than the entire cost of the bridge. Finally, our biologists specifically cautioned against tower supports in the Baylands, which can allow raptors to prey on species, including the endangered salt marsh harvest mouse. Ours is the only design which avoids structure in the medians, tower supports in the Baylands, and does not conflict with this gas main. Let's talk a little bit more about cost. So here we need to address what's a common misperception, that a low-slung structure is more cost-effective. The opposite is true. Moffett and Nickel has told you a lot about the technical advisory panel's comments. The problem, though, is that they changed their structural design from a girder to a self-anchored suspension bridge after the technical advisory panel reviewed the designs, something you're welcome to confirm with city staff. Steel arches, as you see here on the left, are one of the most cost-effective structure types. At Happy Hall in San Jose, we were able to construct two arch spans, not one, but two, of similar length and approach to your project for under $4 million total. Self-anchored suspension bridges, on the other hand, are among the most complex, expensive bridge types. To the right, you can see the cost of many of these bridges, including one that was used in this example tonight. Let's also talk about sustainability. Sustainability means doing more with less. Our structure isn't just visually light, it's physically light. Network arches are the most slender structures ever designed. On the left is the girder that's required, like our competitors' design. We are able to reduce this mass by 75%, as you can see in the middle, eliminating, on the right, you can see 500,000 kilos of CO2 released in the atmosphere during manufacture. As you've seen in the video, this innovative approach extends to construction. Our constructive ability experts had major problems with doing crane construction so close to the 60-kilovolt lines that are directly adjacent to the site. And instead, we're going to use this technology that we've used with Caltrans in Utah to drive the bridge into place and reduce disruption to a single nighttime closure. As you know, we have a wide diversity of users sharing this bridge, young and old, bicycles, pedestrians, wheelchairs. During the competition, we reached out to the community, including local bike advocates. What we heard from them is how important separation was. You can see it here over the freeway, and you can see it here over the Baylands. The bridge includes shortcut stairs at either side of the freeway, allowing direct access. And its radii are based specifically on your city's stated design guidelines to control unsafe speeds at descent. As your design handbook states, 90-foot radii and 20 mile-an-hour speeds are not desirable, something we heard again from local bicycle advocates. Finally, the lighting design balances safety for pedestrians while minimizing environmental impact, just the same as our competitors' does.
I'm Marcel Wilson. We'll spoke about the technical requirements of the project with a focus on pedestrians and cyclists, but clearly, we're talking about a much larger community, for people of all ages, different abilities. And to them, this project will shape their day-to-day quality of life, one of the things that means most to people that live here. This project will be transformative, and it will greatly increase public health, and will also increase the enjoyment of the Baylands. And our proposal anticipates this greater level of use and changes that will happen in the Baylands far into the future. So we've done this at a variety of levels, starting with the amenities that anybody can relate to and would enjoy. These are from the very small things to very large things. So a place to fix your, to air up your tires, a place to fill your water bottle, a place to store bikes, restroom, places to sit, overlook, education, ways to experience the Baylands. And this is all occurring right at the edge of the Baylands. This place would function as a departure point for your outing in the Baylands, or as a destination in and of itself. From here, you could descend down to a lower level. There's a vernal pool where the ecological properties of bay mud have been reactivated by the different waters that are being introduced by the project. There's a boardwalk that allows people to circulate and not conflict with any of the natural processes. There's a restroom neatly tucked underneath the ramp. It's clad by pollinator species. And this approach does not introduce new fill into the Baylands, something that our competitors were not able to accomplish with their approaches to this particular design problem. So from here, then there's also the, we understand that in the face of climate change and sea level rise, thinking far into the future, that this place is going to change over time. Our proposal anticipates how the design can, and the elements can adapt to sea level rise. And it creates an everyday experience out of this looped boardwalk where the markers of sea level rise are indicated for anybody and everybody to understand as a part of their experience here. So if you're seeing it for the first time, or if you're seeing it for the dated, or if it's part of your everyday, the Baylands is a place that you will understand much
About five minutes.
My name is Ned Khan. I'm an environmental artist. I was involved with the design team from the beginning, and right from the start, the idea was to, instead of having art be kind of some sculpture, something that you apply to a bridge, to actually have it be an integral concept into the whole design. And so what we hatched was the idea of being inspired by this unique kind of engineering solution, this cable net structure, this very lightweight, graceful bridge structure system at every crossing of the cables, to have a thin metal element that would be activated by the wind, that would change direction and essentially make the wind visible. So this whole arch of the bridge would become kind of a register of nature, kind of a thing revealing the wind, similar to the way water reveals the action of wind by the waves, or the way that wind blows through grasses and the wind becomes visible. I'm going to turn it back to Will, who's going to talk about some of the bird issues.
Let's talk about bird safety. This is a critically important issue. I hope it's clear that both bridges involve tension members. They also include the 10-foot missile barrier, which is likewise difficult for birds to see. It's been stated that our strategy for ensuring bird safety through the use of these stainless steel bird flight diverters, that's the technical term that they are, is unproven. I'd like us to step back and look at the science. Following being selected by the jury, we reached out and met with local environmental groups who shared their concerns. When we spoke with the Autobahn Society, they mentioned bird diverters would be an option, but they weren't sure if research supported how specifically they should be deployed. We reached out to national experts, including Cornell and Dr. Dan Clem. They confirmed the efficacy of our approach, and they also gave us some key insight. We initially thought, like others, there might not be data to support this approach. But the experts that we reached out to let us know that's not the case. This is a document authored in collaboration with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service that sums up more than 40 studies, here's A through K, that talk about bird diverters and specifically why they work, conducted in California, nationwide, and internationally. In the United States Fish and Wildlife Service's words, "The effectiveness of bird flight diverters has been validated by federal and state agencies and independent researchers." Let's review some of these specific guidelines that the research gives us. Our diverters, you saw the mock-up, need to be seven inches in diameter, something that we're going to follow. On our bridge, they're nine feet on center, nearly twice the recommended density by these studies. They are designed to sway in the wind and are constructed of stainless steel, which has been found to maximize their efficacy in low-light conditions. We will also adapt the cable spacing guidelines and cable thickness guidelines that the experts have recommended. And finally, they incorporate a UV element, which you can see in the orange one there in the center, which absorbs the sun's energy during the day and glows so they're visible during the night. Now, all of what we've shown you up until this slide was in our original competition proposal. And over the past month, our team attended all of the commission meetings and listened to the community's thoughts and input. And as a result, we've identified two important changes you might implement. First, a concern about height. Some people we spoke to really loved the height of the bridge. But after hearing from the public, we also analyzed the structure further. We can reduce its height 20 to 25 feet while still retaining its efficiency, resulting in a structure that's 50 feet over the freeway and just 15 feet higher than the adjacent San Antonio overpass. Secondly, there is reduced, so stay there for a second. Additionally, the public voiced a major concern, which was that southbound commuters on west Bay Shore didn't have direct access to any of these designs. And one of the really unique things about this loop that we've designed is that it's already low on the north side, which will allow us to add a ramp on grade with little additional cost, and that we can include in our budget. In closing, we'd like to say thank you. We look forward to the opportunity to continue to work hand-in-hand with you, to continue to work with the environmental groups, and to continue work with the community to realize this important project. Thank you. Brad, do you want this document?
Yeah.
Thank you. Brad, there was one other presentation.
Yes, so we'd like to have Judith Wasserman, who was the chair of our competition jury, address the counsel about the jury's process.
Great.
Thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor Schmidt, and members of the council, and the new members I've never met before. This was actually Mayor Holman's idea. It's terrible that she couldn't be here tonight, and a very good idea it was, too. When I first heard about the parameters and the budget, I thought we would not get any applications. I thought the parameters were too restrictive. I thought it was ridiculous to be able to build a bridge with contingencies and soft costs for $10 million. I just thought nobody would apply. We got 20 international applications, and these applications were not proposals. They were statements of interest and qualifications. One of our jury members, Steve Burrows, is an internationally-known structural engineer, a commander of the British Empire, and he was very helpful in helping, in having us understand actually who is who on these teams, because he recognized all the bridges, he knew who had built them all. He would say, "Well, this guy worked for the firm that designed that bridge, but it wasn't really his project." I mean, it was really very instructive. So it is not true that we did not have any bridge experts on the jury. The TAC came on, well, I'll get to the TAC in a minute. So we selected from those 20, three teams. We did not see any proposals. We did not pick the three best bridges. We picked the three best teams. They were given $20,000 apiece to design their first proposal, which is sort of what you're seeing tonight. And the TAC did not hear the proposals. They just saw the written and graphic materials. So they did not really have the full benefit of the proposals that we saw as a jury. So we got poetry. I mean, I was astounded at the quality and beauty of the three proposals that we got. And it is true that I said at the time that you could close your eyes and throw darts at it and come up good. The jury was almost unanimous. There was one juror who preferred the Moffett and Nickel proposal, and the rest of us preferred the HNTB proposal. The Architectural Review Board was about the same. There was somebody on the Parks and Rec who had gone to the VTA and said that she wanted the least expensive, simplest bridge, and this was not that, and she wasn't going to vote for either one of them. What we have seen tonight is a really strange, non-standard process in jury competitions. Normally, you have a jury competition, you select a winner, the winner goes on to develop their proposal, and things go on from there. It is extremely unusual, and as far as I know, unprecedented, to have teams come up here and duke it out in public. I mean, I'm just saying, I was appalled, you know? Mine's better than his. So what you have is these two teams trying to sell you a bridge. The, I also wanted to bring up an unmentioned stakeholder group here, which are disabled people. We have a pedestrian crossing at Oregon and at Barcadaro that is not accessible to the disabled at all. It's bad enough for bicycles, it is impossible, literally, for a wheelchair to get through there. This bridge, whichever one it is, will be a wheelchair-accessible bridge, and I want to emphasize how important that is. And lastly, I want to point out that whatever proposal you select tonight is not going to be the final thing. to be the final thing. The design and building process is never finished until the ribbon is cut at the end. There are always changes in the process. Sometimes they get more expensive, sometimes they get less expensive. The city is not, I don't know how to say this politely, the city doesn't blow every one of their construction projects. I mean, Mitchell Park is notorious, but Mitchell Park is one out of many. Out of the five libraries, the rest of them all came in on time and under budget. I mean, it's not impossible to do this. The city knows how. And it also knows that what you see there is first pass. It's maybe 5% of the design process, which is why we don't have numbers. Nobody can give you a cost estimate on that. They can only tell you, we can do it for your budget. They can't tell you, you know, that's one significant figure out of seven, and they can't do any better than that. So I would like to encourage you to follow the direction of the jury and pass this on and get it done so that those of us who really want to use it can get across the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the final?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we have public comments. I have 18 people who'd like to speak, and I'm going to give two minutes to each. I'll remind everyone who's going to speak that we have, each council member has received over 100 letters over the last three or four days. And we have verbatim minutes of the jury, of the ARB, of the Parks and Rec, and Planning Commission as well. So keep that in mind when you utilize your two minutes. But we welcome Keith Wondry as the first speaker.
What light flashes when my time's up? Oh, that one, okay, obviously, good. Okay, thank you.
At one minute, it will turn yellow.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I want everyone, I'm sitting here, I'm kind of appalled. It's, it's a bike trail, right? And this has turned into this giant art contest. And, and I'm listening to this, and it's like, you know, this is a city that has got a suicide problem, a major suicide problem because of the environment in the city, right? The pressure to do things and to do things better than anybody. And the kids are sleeping five hours a night. And we're talking, you know, about spending a ton of money for this bridge that's going to be a decoration over a 12-lane freeway, right? And, and, and it just seems ridiculous to me. I would rather go with like a simple bridge, even, you know, yours is a simpler design, and follows the criteria that was set, more than the other one, and, and take the rest of the money or figure some way, invoke programs to get the students away from the school, get them out into the balene area, right? Because nature, it is proven, nature is a better relaxant for people if you get out into nature, right? And be productive in that manner, as opposed to, nobody cares in driving in those commutes, ah, in those commutes, that, that, you know, oh, what a beautiful bridge, right? Plus, you know, if you go with this one, and then you've got the reflecting stuff there, morning, it's going to reflect the sun into the eyes of the commuters, right? Evening, it's going to reflect the sun into the eyes of the commuters. And, and, you know, you guys got to be prepared that if you put this up and you've got cabling and you're going to get bird strikes, you're going to have accidents. Bird, there are big birds out there. Not all birds are the same. Those studies he showed, hey, make sure they're including big birds, because when the big birds hit those wires and they come down, and they weigh 20 pounds, and they come down on the freeway and there's an accident, I can guarantee you, people are going to sue the city. People are going to sue the designers, right? And, and, and I guarantee you, think about it. Anyway, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Jeff Hosea and Kirk Garda is next.
Good evening, council.
To the left, yeah.
There we go, there we go. Good evening, council. Jeff Hosea with Sarah Architects out of Portland. I'm here representing Google tonight, so I wanted to read their letter that they were proposing or that they wrote. "Google's excited to see the Adobe Creek Bridge project moving forward. We strongly support biking and pedestrian improvements in the area. We believe this bridge will benefit the entire region. By helping commuter cyclists have a safe path across 101, cycling will be increased, which will decrease traffic congestion and improve air quality. In addition, walkers, bird watchers, and recreational cyclists will have better access to appreciate the balenes. As noted, all three options cross the parking lot of Google's property at 3600 West Bayshore. Google extends our commitment to cooperating in this project by working with the City of Palo Alto and granting an easement for this project across our property. Google finds all three designs interesting, but we would note our preference based on the user's point of view is for submission C, McNichols' submission, smoother for bike flow, the way it combines separation of bike and pedestrian uses with pedestrian stairs on the west side. The stairs allow a convenient shortcut for those who choose to use them, which would come down right onto the Google property there." So with that.
Great. Thanks very much for coming tonight. Kirk Garda, followed by Alice Mansell.
Good evening, council members. I am a Sierra Club intern for the Loma Prieta chapter. Our preference is for option C, the Moffett and Nichol group. The thing that struck me the most about the bridge design differences revolved around the openness of the option C. You're supposed to not have a monument or focus on the bridge. It's about enabling access to nature. And if we're trying to promote that, it shouldn't be focused on selfies on a bridge or whatever. It should be focused on enabling this access, improving the baylands, and allowing the monuments of enabling access to speak for itself in more subtle tones. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Alice Mansell, to be followed by Emily Rensel.
Hi, good evening. I think most of you have heard me before speak about airport issues, but I'm not here for that. I'm here for the bridge. I've been a, was born here, lived here decades and decades. I first became interested in the baylands when I was a fifth grader at Walter Hayes, at one of the first groups taken out to the bayland to taste the pickleweed. So I've been fascinated with the baylands ever since and go out there quite regularly, not just for the airport, but also just nature viewing and just sitting there and watching the lights come up on the opposite shores. I'm very concerned about this because I think the, in looking at all of this, not just as somebody who loves the baylands, but also as a real estate attorney, the environmental review that you're going to have to do if you do the arch one is going to be difficult. You've got wetlands issues, you've got two creeks coming in there. But then I say to myself, well, what if you say it can go smooth sailing? They've got a history, they think they don't have a problem. I then say, well, what about the drivers going under that bridge on 101? As a pilot, I have seen what a bird strike does when it hits an airplane going about 60 to 70 miles an hour. I've seen a seagull hit a windshield of an airplane, shattered its seagull guts everywhere. You know, that's what we might have. And a seagull is considered kind of a medium-sized bird, not a big one like a duck, which has got a lot more in them. This arch is gorgeous. I remember the first time I saw it at Mitchell Park, I went right out there and looked at the storyboards, I thought, how pretty. But then I saw all these cables, and I thought, oh my. Then they, they had these bird diverters on it, where I can't stop thinking of them as flashy disks. And I think to myself, well, as a driver who frequently is there when the sun is coming up and down in my face, as a driver, I'd have problems. Anyway, I'll just cut it short, please pick C.
Thank you. Emily Rensel, to be followed by Roy Snyder.
Well, I'm Emily Rensel, and I concur with the prior speakers who were supporting the option C. It's much more in keeping with the low-key profile of the baylands and I think the general low-key profile of Palo Alto. I have previously raised the issue of form-following function, which is what we hope to get out of architecture, and I think that option C does that far better than option A. And I have also raised the question, as some others have, about the impact this could have on traffic, both in terms of the glint of these things and also the potential for bird strikes that are going to fall into the traffic and the distraction of drivers. This area between San Antonio and Embarcadero, I note from listening to 740 as I drive back and forth, is a high accident area. And there's a lot going on there of merges and exits, and I think it's definitely an important consideration in terms of how you go with this proposal. I think the simpler and more low-key proposal is far better, and especially, we've seen views of the baylands from this bridge, but I think it's important how this will appear from the baylands as one looks around from there. Are you going to be suddenly hit with a large urban artifact? So I urge you to support number C.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker is Roy Snyder, followed by Carl Jones.
Thank you very much. I'm Roy Snyder. My wife and I have lived in the Palo Verde neighborhood for 40 years. We are bikers, birders, and we have an interest in nature in general. We visit the baylands one to three times a week, depending upon the weather, the photo opportunities, and the migratory birds that are passing through. We bike from our house on Thomas Drive using the Adobe Creek Underpassing when it's open, six months of the year, and when it's closed, we drive and walk from Terminal Boulevard. I'll note in passing that we are not affiliated with the Sierra Club or the Audubon Society. Please stay focused on the problem at hand. An improved, simple, expeditiously-built, cost-effective overcrossing is what is needed. The overcrossing is not the destination nor an attraction itself. It is merely the means for improved access to the baylands and all the wonderments of the nature there. Users want to pass into the baylands as easily and as quickly as possible. That's where the action is. On the return, bikers' priorities are on a quick passage home to a cold beverage and the start of a kid's soccer game. Waypoints, viewer turnouts, so-called amenities are all superfluous. Please do not embarrass us by building a star-spangled Gateway to Las Vegas-type arch bridge to South Palo Alto. The whole suspension arch concept detracts from the ambience and the serenity of the natural beauty of our baylands and the wildlife found there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl Jones, followed by Shelby Sinclair.
I'm Carl Jones. I also live in Palo, Palo Verde. I've used the Underpass and the San Antonio Bridge for years, both for work and for pleasure. I'm looking forward to a bridge. As, as the chair of the jury said, we've gone through a long process, now's the time to get it done. Two points that I would like to make about whichever choice is chosen. I think they're both gorgeous, they both have things that I'm attracted to and, and things that I, that I, I don't particularly like. But two things. One, the lighting. I am not a proponent of the motion-based lighting. Aside from the cost and the additional failure modes that it provides, as opposed to merely bulbs, I believe that pedestrians and cyclists in the evening will want to be able to see the entire path across the bridge through which they will, they will travel. They will not want to know whether there is or isn't somebody or something that's not moving further down the path. So I am not in favor of the motion-based lighting. The second is that I am in favor of a northbound access, and whether that's a ramp, which I think would be excellent, or whether it's a, a set of stairs that I saw in many of the overpasses when I visited China some years ago, where it is possible to roll the bicycle up and down easily without having to carry it. It involves small ramps, either in the middle or on the side. So it should be not too steep and should certainly have a mechanism for which you could, you could get your bicycle up and down from the north side. I think that's an important addition. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Next speaker is Shelby Sinclair, followed by Clay Elliott.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt and the city council members. I'm Shelby, and I am an intern with the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Our organization respects the city's design competition for the Adobe Creek Bridge, and we support the submission Design C because it embraces all of the design criteria and guidelines, rather than choosing drama attempting to mitigate what matters to us most, bird safety. I went through today's package and the two of the previous city council meeting packages. Altogether, 83 letters oppose the Design A and two are in support of Design A. 76 support the Design C and nine support just an alternative from that. So in conclusion, almost all of the comments submitted did not support Design A, and thank you.
Thank you. Claire Elliott, followed by Michael Haney.
Yes, I'm Claire Elliott in the Ventura neighborhood of Palo Alto, and I have been using the Benjamin Lefkowitz Underpass for many years for recreation and for eight years for work, and I've been very excited to hear that there was going to be an overpass that will be year-round there. And especially now that we've got the Google Plex and we've got the JCC with retired people who can use it. Anyway, thank you for, for doing this. I have some concerns to add. I am excited about the Design C for many reasons. The biggest concern I have about A, like everybody else, is bird collisions. But I want to add some points that nobody's discussed yet, which is nighttime bird migration. I found a USGS report that shows somebody was viewing the moon through a telescope, and 9,000 birds per hour were seen migrating past his telescope. I don't know where that was, but this location is where 70% of birds in the Pacific Flyway are moving through, so there are a lot of birds in this area. And I used to actually work with Brad at the treatment plant and, and worked with people to monitor bird life, and Emily Rensel Marsh, and we counted over 200 white pelicans just right off the freeway there. So those are large birds that are going to be flying through there. Another critter that I thought about, I also thought about, I saw Catherine from Canopy bring you your check from the trees, and I'd love to bring you a check from the critters because we also have bats in the baylands, and one bat can eat up to 1,000 mosquitoes. And they fly around at night, and I don't know if anybody's looked at bat collisions, but these things look like mist nets, and mist nets are used to catch both birds and bats. So lastly, I'd like to see Palo Alto adopt a biophilic-city piece to the comprehensive plan, and this could be a really good place to start with it. And I'd also love to see two other things. One, that it's the Benjamin Lefkowitz Bridge to give, keep his memory, but also that a pathway towards East Meadow Drive gets connected in there through the Water District easement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Michael Haney, followed by Shira Shaham.
Okay, so, so I've lived in Palo Alto almost 20 years now, and my family's got a house not far from this bridge, and will be using it regularly. And I can't believe what I just heard. Someone just said, what matters to us most is the safety of the birds. That makes my blood boil. What matters to me most is the safety of my kids. Not too long ago, my 14-year-old daughter was walking around a corner in Palo Alto. A teenager on a bike, both hands off the handlebar, talking on her cellphone, almost squashed her. The, the Moffett and Nichol Bridge has, has just a painted line separating the bicyclists from the pedestrians. A teenager is not even going to see that line. The HNTB bridge has, has a barrier or separation between the bikers and the people, and that's what's going to prevent collisions between our kids and the bicyclist. Thank you.
Thank you. Shira Shaham and Joanne Edwards is next.
Hello, my name is Shira Shaham. I live in Palo Alto. I grew up here, too, and I ride a bicycle. I also happen to hold a Bachelor's of Architecture from Cal Poly and a minor in Sustainable Environments. It has come to my attention through a friend at the Audubon Society that one of the two submissions for the Adobe Creek Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge that's being considered that... that include design elements known to maim and kill birds. Based on this science, I've not done the research myself, only Submission C, the Moffett-Nickel design, meets the design requirement specifically, that requirement of coexisting harmoniously with nature, with wildlife. It is a shame that Submission A was designed with a high cable suspension bridge. I say this because in my experience as a cyclist, riding over many a bridge in New York City for the past five years, it, it seems to be the better design from the user's perspective. Submission A separates the bicycle and pedestrian traffic by elevation and rails, which makes it safer for both. It also creates more opportunities for user interactions with environment and more places to pause, as well as amenities. This, this design might, might even attract, would, would probably attract more users than the alternative by becoming a destination and help that, help our community transition to more alternative modes of transportation. If, however, its suspension structure is, that the height and the cables are unnecessary, harmful, and does not fit in the atmosphere of the Baylands, therefore is not a good design element. If you have to choose with how the designs stand, please choose Submission C, Moffett and Nickel. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Edwards, followed by Mike, Mike Ferrera.
In case I run out of time, I'm going to start at the end of my talk and encourage you to honor the juriing process and vote for Design A. I've been part of the community as a resident and business owner since the 1980s. In 2003, I co-founded the Museum of Craft and Design in San Francisco, which is where I spend my days now. Historically, iconic structures of both architectural and artistic significance have been an important mark in the public realm and have added global prominence and awareness to communities of all sizes. The HMBT, HNTB team will have far-reaching benefits and importantly, will contribute to a sense of place where we make a stake in our shared community and collaboratively foster the creation of a new vital public destination. As an entry point to the Baylands stretching over 101, this exquisite structure will offer grace and function over an otherwise lackluster freeway. It represents a balance of structural integrity, high aesthetic and visual beauty. We have an important opportunity to endorse an exceptional project by a creative group of thought leaders. Collaboratively and with intention, they've designed a brilliant structure, which without question will enhance the Palo Alto landscape. Palo Alto is poised at the northern edge of Silicon Valley and embodies boundary-busting innovation. This city has long been ahead of its time. This group, Team A, will provide a thoughtful pivotal design which will clearly enhance the creativit, creative diversity of Palo Alto and set an important benchmark for leading edge and functional public art and design. This collaboration is a gift to our community and is to be embraced. Please honor the juriing process, and I urge you to move forward with, in the true spirit of Palo Alto, with Team HNTB. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ferrera, followed by Shani Kleinhouse.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Mike Ferrera. I'm the Conservation Chair for the local chapter of the Sierra Club, Loma Prieta, and a member of the Executive Committee. I didn't know one of our folks was coming down here tonight, in addition. Our Conservation Committee and our Executive Committee unanimously approved our joining in on the letters in support of Option C. We, we appreciate the process that you've put out here, and it's extraordinary. It's almost within the legend of the Palo Alto process, but it's great that so many people are taking part in this. We think you've, you've brought a lot of expertise from all of the people that have dealt with you. We think that A might be better somewhere else, not quite so close to migration corridors. And I would have a concern that the fix for the problem, the glitter that you're going to put on there, is really going to have, I think it would remove all the tastefulness that was in the design. It's the, the, the fix to try to remove the interference with birds would, would, I think would have a very bad visual effect from an aesthetic standpoint. So we're with, as we've said before, we're with Option C, and we would hope that that's what you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Shani Kleinhouse, followed by Jim Foley.
Good evening. I'm Shani Kleinhouse with the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I'm also a resident of Palo Alto. And I wanted to first thank you for an insightful and thorough discussion of the comprehensive plan and discussing nature in that context, because this is really what this is about as well. So the spirit of Palo Alto, the spirit of the Baylands and nature are at stake. And now I'm going to talk about bird-safe design, because this is really the one thing that I understand very, very well. The Uplik Manual, the one that you were shown before and had all these flight diverters, was developed for power lines, horizontal things, not a lattice. So what happens when you have a shiny disc or something similar and a bird comes along and it flies along, and maybe it flies at, at an angle because it's trying to go from the south of Palo Alto to the north of the Bayland. But anyway, it goes along and it says, "Oh, disc, what am I going to do?" It goes above. When you have a power line, you can go above. When you have a lattice, you strike something right above. And that is the problem of this design as opposed to other types of design. There are many others, and I don't have a lot of time to talk about it. But height is critical. The difference between 50 feet and 34 feet is meaningful, and we're asking you not to do something with a bridge that divides the community instead of bringing it together. Everybody wants a bridge. It doesn't have to be a bridge that harms birds. It doesn't have to be a bridge that imposes such a huge urban presence on our Baylands. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Foley, followed by Heidi Trilling.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jim Foley. I live in Saratoga, not Palo Alto. But I'm a taxpayer in Santa Clara County, so I've been following this project, and since there's VTA funding in it, I've been kind of interested in it, and I have a few comments. Everything I have is taken off the, your internet. Anyway, I have 50-plus years of experience in engineering, the public and private sectors. I worked for Bechtel, City of San Jose, left San Jose in 2002 as Deputy Director of Public Works. Michael Starter worked for me in the 80s. Okay, Michael Starter worked for me in the 80s. Licensed as a civil structural geotechnical engineer in four states. I have contractor's licenses. I was involved with Bay Bridge. I've been doing bridge design and construction for many years. I was on the selection board for Cupertino Mary Avenue Bridge over 280. There was a tide-armed bridge at Vasiona Park in the mid-'80s. Nice bridge. I concur with both the staff and design jury recommendations for Submission A. I looked at Submission C, and it kind of reminds me of the Millennium Bridge in London over the Thames, which had problems, had to be retrofitted. And actually, the retrofit for that bridge cost more than your bridge. It's also a first of its kind, were the quotes that I heard. The Tide Arch Bridge has been done before. Submission A is the Tide Arch Bridge, has been recommended by the jury and the staff. I think you should go with that for the sake of construction claims and getting the job done on time, within budget, in the first place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heidi Trilling, followed by Gila Dev.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council and everyone else who's here tonight. My name is Heidi Trilling, and I live and work in the Adobe Meadows section of Palo Alto. And I'm an active member of the PTA, and I am always in the schools volunteering. And the thing I wanted to talk about tonight was the process. Like Judith Wasserman said and another one of the speakers mentioned, I, I do feel like the jury process was a little skewed, and I frankly don't understand exactly what happened there. Another thing that relates to this, which brings me back to the school system, is that right now in the JLS Middle School, my daughter is studying government and debate and discourse in the context of the founding of this country. And we have talked about this bridge issue, and one of the things that did come up was the fact that in a classic or traditional juried selection, there's a panel who selects a winner of a contest, and that's pretty much the end of the story. But here we are tonight discussing this as if no juried selection happened, no contest happened, there was no winner. And when my daughter and a couple of her key buddies asked why this was happening, I frankly had no answer, as I said before. And I came here tonight to just hear exactly what happened to the process, because I think the process is just as important as the decision of which beautiful bridge we go with. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Gila Dev, followed by Beverly Benson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt and members of the council. My name is Gila Dev, and I am the co-chair of the Sustainable Land Use Committee of the Sierra Club. And you wonder why so many of us club members are here. We've taken extraordinary interest in this bridge, partly because it comes down within a block of where our headquarters are located on the Baylands. I also speak as an architect, and I appreciate some of the comments that Judy Wasserman made and others about how design competitions are conducted, having participated on both sides, both as a competition member of a team and as a jury member. So I'm very sympathetic to both teams, particularly the winners. But I have to say, the, one of the things that I had to come to terms with when we entered and juried competitions is that a competition has great value to the people who put it on. It brings out essential qualities without the constraints of total reality. And so it allows us to look at what are the essential quantities that we are looking for? And sometimes, none of them, like the Presidio competition, none of them meet some of the criteria that come out later when you look at all of them and you think about, you know, oh, these were the possibilities, as opposed to if you had given it to just one firm. So given that, I really feel that it brought out certain things. We're very, very excited about the fact that there's a bridge, because we are transportation and land use people, and we are very excited that there are going to be a bicycle bridge, and we'd like to see it fast, just like everyone else. Our feeling is that Scheme C actually is quietly, very quietly, the better of the solutions, because Palo Alto is, doesn't have an identity crisis. So we think that this is a better solution.
Thank you. Beverly Benson, followed by Kirsten Daler.
Good evening. I'm a birder. I've lived in Palo Alto for 30 years. I also bicycle. And I live about a block away from the current bike bridge that goes over 101. And it's pretty terrifying, actually, to get over. So I'm not sure how many people are going to stand around on the bridge and look at the vista. But anyway, I vote for C. Thank you.
Kirsten Daler, followed by Deirdre Cromie.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Kirsten Daler, and I was here in December. I think I was the only person who came and spoke. I've been very interested in this process for a number of reasons. One is I am, I live locally. I'm a homeowner in the area. I'm a biker, I'm a hiker, I'm a mom. And so I've been interested, because I have been using that other terrible bike bridge. And so I've been looking at issues from a number of angles. From the mom perspective, I help with the bike rodeo. I see how poorly our third graders bike and how much they need some extra guidance and practice. I have middle schoolers now, and they leave the house and, and go to school. I'm also a science teacher. And so as I've watched the process and I've seen what's been happening with robotics in the area, and I see how our kids are excited by the design challenge, I, too, was super excited, like, here we are, an international competition. So as I looked at the bridges, I looked at the review, I really came down on the side of the experts, and I said, "I feel like, I, I think that Bridge A is beautiful. I feel like it's a team that's responsive when issues are brought up. I hear them going to experts. I see them looking at the research. I see them reaching out to community and saying, 'How can we work together? Let's look at these issues. Let's find out what are the challenges? Let's find out what are the solutions? Let's have a research-based answer to that.'" And so being a science teacher, having the excitement of, of the process, I want the process to be transparent. I want to feel like I'm confident, and what happens is not just people coming in at the last minute for some particular issue that they have a banner behind and not having watched the process all the way through. I think there was a lot of time for issues to come to the head, and I appreciate the process, and I want to commend you for having it. And I think that you should go with the, the review of the experts and go with a team that's really willing to work with community and with the challenges of there. And for that reason, I really, I like the beauty of Design A. For me, I'm a scientist. It looks like DNA, or makes me think of innovation and inspiration. So innovation, inspiration, children's safety, thanks.
Good, thank you. Deirdre Cromie, followed by Penny Elson.
Hello, city council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Deirdre Cromie. I've sat on the Parks and Recreation Commission for about seven years. I'm not, our commission is split on which bridge to, which design to support. I'm not speaking on the behalf of the commission. Today, I'm speaking on, just from my own views. My goal in joining the commission was to get the Lefkowitz Tunnel to stay open beyond October 15th. I, I succeeded in that goal. I worked very hard on it. We now have, rather than a calendar closing, we have a seasonal closing. It's a, this getting access to the Baylands is of utmost importance to me as a resident of this community. It's some of our biggest open space area that I want as accessible to the residents as possible. This bridge, I've been watching this bridge for years through the development. Audubon has been involved in this from the very beginning. We've all watched as this evolves. We're all very invested. I support the Plan C, the Moffett and Nichols Plan, because I don't think the bridge should be a destination. I think the bridge should be a means of access to the Baylands that integrates with the Baylands, that's true to our heritage in this city. If we look at the Lucy B. Evans Interpretive Center, it subtly blends in with the Baylands. I want the bridge to do the same thing. A is a count of worms. We're going to be mitigating it endlessly to get it fixed, to be safe for birds. I don't think we need to start with a design that, that we have to worry about so much. It's so problematic, whereas C is the right bridge for that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Elson, followed by Irene McLaughlin.
Hello, I'm Penny Elson. 513 El Capitan Place. And I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I think it won't surprise you that I'm excited to have this bike pedestrian bridge moving forward, and I hope that it happens expeditiously. And I want to thank both of the design teams. I think we have two really beautiful designs, and I don't envy the decision you have to make tonight. And I also want to say thank you to the jury, because I know that a lot of time went into, you know, evaluating the various designs. You've heard a lot about, you know, the bicycle pedestrian experience on the bridge, so I'm not going to talk about that. I do have one question, which is this big pile of, the, one thing you don't know me, about me is I have two self-described bird nerds in my house. My husband and daughter go out every Sunday morning when they can at the crack of dawn to watch birds in the Baylands. This is going to be a great thing for them. But they're very concerned about the potential for danger to birds, hazards to birds with one of these designs. And I'm glad to see that some studies have been offered. However, I'm disappointed that they were not in the staff report. And I don't know if they were available, I'm curious to know if they were available to council in advance of this meeting. Were they? Yes? No? I, I would like to know. I mean, I've been watched with alarm, the increasing concerns expressed by the Audubon Society, the Sierra Club throughout this process. I have to say that I know, I was at the early meetings for the bike bridge, and I know that members from the Audubon Society expressed concerns very early on that this be a bird-sensitive design. And it sounds like the designers have all tried to be responsive, but there are some serious concerns- serious concerns about this, and I worry about going into an environmental review process in which we have, excuse me, conservation groups already concerned. And I think we all know what happens to the environmental review process when those concerns are raised so early and they're not answered well. So just want to, I guess, ask that that tone be made public before we go further.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Eileen McLaughlin.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt and members of council. I'm Eileen McLaughlin, I'm representing the Citizens Committee to Complete the Refuge. And first I want to say, I think this, getting this bridge built for the behalf of the pedestrians and bicyclists is certainly something that needs to be done, and I totally support that. In sitting here tonight and listening to some of the other speakers, they kind of compounded some of the things that I had in mind. And I came, one, you know, I agree with so many of the comments that are made about wildlife and support those concerns here. But I think about process, and I'm thinking about going into an environmental review process, and under CEQA, where you have to have an array of alternatives. What are we doing here if we're choosing one? Where is the environmental review really doing the comparisons? Has it already been pre-done by, you know, under the judging, or is that, I don't really think that happened? So I'm a little confused about how the integrity of this process does the complete environmental review. And then I want to look forward then to the permitting process. We worry about the wetlands, and it may be, I know the city has had its exposure to problems with working with a permitting process and getting it through in a timely way. And have those ideas been, you know, fought through, and have we made some understanding of what those are? You understand, staff, the report said it was informally vetted, the NEPA, you know, nexus here, but what does that mean? And so I just would like to think about where the process goes from here. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes public comment. Appreciate each one of you coming. We heard of a variety of perspectives and points of view that is very valuable for us to have. So appreciate your time and thoughts. Let me hesitate for, we have a closed session scheduled at the end of the meeting that I believe has to take place. We also have a colleague's memo, and given the time that we are well behind schedule, let me raise with my colleagues the possibility of postponing the colleague's memo. If that's okay with everyone, maybe the next opportunity to bring it back would be good. I guess we need a motion.
And could you move it to a date uncertain, and we'll just work with the mayor and vice mayor to schedule it as quickly as possible in the agenda-setting process? Just, we haven't looked at the tentative.
Okay, a motion?
Glad to make a motion. I would move we postpone the colleague's memo until a date uncertain.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? And that passes six to one with Councilmember Walbeck. Opposed? Okay, that brings us, summarize where we are. Does staff want to respond? City manager want to respond to where we are, what we've heard?
Tastes great, less filling out.
Okay.
Do you have some comments, Brad or Mike, please?
Yeah, I would just like to, it was very informative to hear the comments from the public and from the two competitors, but I do feel that Judith Wasserman made a good point about the process that we followed, and we stand by our staff recommendation. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
City manager?
So yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would add that, you know, I think there are a range of comments that are sort of in the eye of the beholder as far as a perspective or opinion. There may be some areas, though, where science or some data is unclear, and I don't mean to postpone this, but I would just, not knowing where the council might want to be, if there is additional information that you feel would be necessary to sort of validate some of the perspectives, you know, I don't know if you would want us to follow up on any of those things before you make a decision, but I would just put that idea out there.
Thank you. Let me go to Councilmember Burt.
Well, my questions are along that line. We received some additional information about both the risks and potential benefits of Design A for its impact on birds. And I take it that you were given some material that you haven't had a chance to review. Let me take one step back. It does seem that Design A has inherently higher risks to birds than Design C. So how was that weighed in this review process?
It was in the guiding principles for the competition, but I don't recall a lot of specific discussion about threats to birds.
Yeah, so I know it was in the guiding principles, and that's part of what I'm struggling with. So if it was part of the guiding principles, how did the alternative with the higher risk become selected?
Well, yeah. The jury had that discussion, and the presentation from the HNTB team discussed this mitigating factor of the DISs, which were being provided for bird safety. And the concerns that we're hearing raised tonight were not raised by members of the public at the design competition itself.
And if we wanted to have independent third-party determination of these risks, how would we go about that? Have we identified, or do we feel like we could identify national experts that could address this and give us independent evaluation?
We, I think we'd have to do a little work to decide which national experts we felt comfortable working with. The issue is that both the Audubon Society and the team in question with the design have given us the names of national experts that they both say support what they're saying.
I see. And then the other thing about option C is not having the bike and pedestrian separation. Is there, one, was there discussion on the designers of C on whether separation of bikes and pedestrians was feasible for that design?
There was discussion of that aspect of those designs during the competition, and I believe that the submission C team described how they had successfully implemented the, I believe it's not just a paint strip, it's a very small two- or three-inch vertical separation.
Chair, if the Design C team might be able to respond to that question? If they have any additional information?
The mode separation method that we propose indeed involves vertical separation. It's the same mode separation that we implemented for your project here in Palo Alto at Homer Avenue Underpass. It's the same mode separation device that we used in the Berkeley Bike Bridge. And it is the same mode separation device that is now being considered for the Bay Bridge, because lack of any vertical separation has been a problem. I'm on the Pedestrian Advisory Committee for District Four for Caltrans, and in fact, this very subject is on our agenda for this Wednesday's meeting, because the reference design that I created for the Berkeley Bike Bridge has now proven itself very successful, and we are reviewing it as such.
So are you claiming that the full physical separation is not in any way safer for bikes and pedestrians?
Well, let me ask you this. If you are a cyclist, and you want to go in the slow path because you want to stop, then you have two narrower pathways to choose from, either of which you're going to create a blockage in when you slow down and stop. So if you want to see the view on the fast lane and you stop, you're going to create a blockage there, because you now have two separate paths.
Okay, so I hear you, and you asked me a question, but I asked you one.
Okay. Can you repeat your question? I thought I was answered.
Are you saying that the full physical separation is not safer for bikes and pedestrians?
I would say that creating a barrier between the separation is indeed a possible hazard.
And is that, so there are hazard elements to it, and there are safety elements to it. If you don't, I'm looking how those net out. And if you don't have a clear answer, that's okay, too?
Oh, I absolutely have a clear answer, and I think it's borne out by best practices, which say, build a wider path, and building mode separation and striping and signage to that wider path, don't split the road into two segments.
Okay, thank you. And Brad, what are the different, or the widths of those two different designs? If you need to look back, I can wait a moment.
Good evening, Elizabeth Ames, project manager. So I believe that the goal was to have an 18-foot-wide facility, and I believe both designs can do that. I think the HNTB is clearly 18, and I would have Stephen verify. I thought it was the same, but it could be 16 feet wide.
Okay, if you could verify that.
We provide for a six-foot sidewalk, and then two minimum five-foot-wide bike lanes in either direction, plus shy distance. So indeed, you do end up with approximately 18 feet.
18 or 16? I didn't follow that math.
Okay, if you add shy distance, which is the additional distance when you're next to a barrier on either side, you get 16 plus two plus two, you get 18 feet total width.
Thank you. Let's see. That's up to the chair. I guess the other applicant would like to speak to this. Is that, okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, on both the scents, there's a mode separation by coating, wood, concrete, and we have 19 feet there together. And then on both of the curves, they widen, so we're providing up to 12 extra feet around the Baylands where the view is. We have nine feet for the inside radius, and we've widened also nine feet on the other radius. And then over the freeway, it widens again, because they're physically separated, and then we have 22 feet across the whole thing.
Thank you. Then the other issue is on the cost control. Where do we really stand on validating the costs, and what mechanisms might we be able to place in the contract to assure that there's not a cost overrun?
Well, as much as we've tried to do what we can to this point to understand the costs and try to control them, we really are at too preliminary a level of design to truly understand the costs. So as we discussed before when we came to the council, we included this $8 million construction cost in the competition, even accounting for that including construction contingency, right? And we did get submissions of construction cost estimates from all the teams that showed them coming really close to that $8 million figure. We discussed this with the technical advisory panel, and it was at least reassuring for me to hear that while they identified elements and issues that may not have been included in these kind of preliminary estimates, they did think that what the designs were talking about, there weren't elements of them that should dramatically increase the costs.
So what if we go the next step along, and we find that the selected design, whichever one that is, comes in above this $8 million? What happens then?
Councilmember Burt, there are means that we can put in the design contract that require the designer to design the project within the budget. And if there are, at various stages during design, there will be cost estimates performed, 30%, 50%. If they are exceeding the budget with those cost estimates, they would be required to do value engineering or design changes to bring that cost back within budget. The only place that gets really dicey, if you will, is the construction climate when you go out to bid.
And so if they have to do design changes to come into the budget, and that design might cut into some of the reasons that we selected a given alternative, what happens then? We're too far down the road to reverse ourselves.
Excuse me, I was having a parallel conversation with Brad about the ability to actually change horses in midstream. How far were we into it precisely because of the fact we don't necessarily want to get into an automatic value engineering situation?
Right, and kind of the answer to that is that we think that this next level of the design that's going to take us through the environmental review process, and hopefully get us some better cost estimates that are based on a more progressed design, are probably in the neighborhood of maybe up to a few hundred thousand dollars.
So at that point in time, we would likely have a higher confidence or certainty on the construction costs, not certainty, I should say, a higher confidence, and that would cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars. So if we move down that path with a likelihood that we would not be changing, but if there was something that happened, that's the risk that we take. That's correct. Okay, final question. Among these two designs, we've heard indications that, from the environmental approval and the Caltrans approval, that C may have less problems, fewer problems than A. Is that, is that something that we would agree on?
Well, either of these design ideas are not the usual thing that Caltrans reviews. So although I wasn't involved in the early days of this project, what I've heard is that they weren't too keen on us pursuing a design competition to begin with. Some of the comments about the Caltrans review came from the technical advisory panel meeting, and as I think one of the team members talked about, the Moffett and Nichols submission actually changed somewhat in its type of design from that meeting.
So if we did ask for an independent review on the avian safety, would you be able to, at the same time, come back with additional information on which of these alternatives is least likely to have, and what level of risk we might have with Caltrans and environmental review on each option?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Walbeck?
So, just a couple of comments about the process, a couple of comments on priorities, and several questions, including one probably rhetorical question for now that we should address in the longer term, but it will be difficult to address tonight, and a number that I'm hoping to have answers to this evening, if possible. But first, actually, let me just say thank you to the applicants, thank you to the jury, thank you to staff. This is, a lot of work's gone into this, from a lot of This is, a lot of work's gone into this from a lot of angles, and I fully appreciate all of that work. So I might sound really critical about a couple of those things I'm warning you right now, but I don't mean that to diminish my appreciation of the amount of work that has gone in from all sectors for this. Regarding this question of, you know, of jury contest, you know, there's, you know, and the question of why it's coming back to us, you know, why are we now, you know, we've already had the jury selection, and some people are, you know, pretty, fairly bothered about the fact that we've had the jury selection and it's still not decided. You know, on one hand, we risk being a rubber stamp, and on the other hand, we risk making the whole ordeal up until this point pointless. So that's, you know, kind of the big question of whether we should have just gone with an RFP. Or does the jury, does this contest process, everything we've had up to this point, has it enabled us to get options that we wouldn't have been able to get through an RFP? And that, again, that might be a rhetorical question, but others might have clearer answers to that question. I hadn't been on council when this was all getting going. You know, if our job was really to be a rubber stamp, then it would have been on consent. But it wasn't on the consent calendar, and since it wasn't on the consent calendar, I don't think that we should just defer to what was recommended. I think we should make an independent decision. The contest was primarily an architectural contest, and as council, we have other priorities that we need to consider. My neighbor Roy Schneider identified a few, and to slightly rephrase them, you know, I think we should have something that's simple, soon, inexpensive, dependable, provide access, and not be hideous. On inexpensive, that means design, construction, and also lifetime costs, you know, lifetime cycle, which is something that I haven't heard discussed very much. Going on to real questions, the vernal pool in HNTB's Plan A, were mosquitoes considered as a problem for that? Just wondering if that's something that was considered? Yeah, you know, is the water moving or is the water static? I know it's kind of an optimal question, sorry. I probably should have gone to staff a week ago.
I believe the water's static. I don't recall us having discussion of that. Did you want to ask the team member?
If applicant, if you don't have an answer right now, that's fine, but does the water move or is it fairly static water?
I'm confident saying it would behave just like any other standing water in the baylands, just, you know, there's lots of other water in low areas. This is a facility for treating the stormwater that the bridge would also create, but it would largely infiltrate after a designed period of time.
As far as costs, I know this has been mentioned, but again, for initial costs and also for lifetime costs, I don't know if we have any way of estimating, estimating, or having something written into a contract to, so that we can consider lifetime costs, maintenance, upkeep. At least one of the designs has a number of complex features, which are probably pretty well-tested in other places, but you also, you know, you want to be thoughtful about those things. So I'm curious if staff has any thoughts on that.
That's something we could look into some more and report back. We did have discussion of operating costs and lifetime costs to some degree. They were a little more focused on the fact that the, that no one thought that either of these designs we're talking about would have significant costs and that they would have a very long lifespan due to the material, the core ten steel that they're made out of. And the discussion was more about the fairly significant ongoing costs for the third submission that we haven't been discussing this evening.
Okay. Timeline for construction, are we looking at roughly comparable here between A or C?
Oh, between these two? With the information we have now, I would say it's probably the same.
And again, and kind of following on, maybe similar line of questioning to what Councilmember Burt was asking before, is there some way, this might be a question for Molly to maybe weigh in also, is there a way that we can ensure or provide either carrots or sticks around timeline as well as avoiding cost overruns, perhaps with, you know, leaving the option open to switch to another option if there are major problems down the road? Or do we open ourselves up to risk, or is that something we want to talk about in closed session?
Councilmember Walback, I suspect that your question really goes to the construction phase, and there are some things that public agencies can do in the construction phase to incentivize, you know, prompt building. But I think really right now, what the team is focusing on is getting a good design. And so I think that general direction that, you know, you're looking for the teams to focus on constructability, you know, is probably sufficient.
For Team C, Moffett and Nichols, and perhaps for staff, the PG knee line, I believe it's on the Bayland side of 101. Team A explicitly described how they're going to avoid intersecting with the PG knee line, and I'm curious if the Moffett-Nichols design had addressed this one at all.
That wasn't something we discussed during the process. I'm not aware of there being a conflict because I think, believe that they're using the alignment that we provided with the design guidelines, in which we were aware of that line and the need to avoid it.
Okay. And if there's any clarification or any input that the team would like to offer, if it pleases the chair, I'd be happy to open it up to them, if they do have anything they'd like to say about that.
Good evening, Elizabeth Ames again. So there's a 20-foot easement and a 36-inch gas main on the east side, and so near East Bay Shore, it's really off the pathway, and it's very close to the path. But essentially, it's near the potential column that the teams Moffett and Nichols has proposed. So it is a sensitive area. We want to stay out of the easement and make sure that any structure is away out of that zone, so they can elaborate, I'm sure.
Yeah, I can answer that. We did look at utilities, the existing utilities with our teammates, and we have a figure that I can pull up. So we did, we do have a base map showing the utilities, including this utility in question, and we know that our column is sufficient distance away where there's not a conflict. That's how we located the column.
Great, thank you.
And as we, if we proceed into the design, we would pothole that to make sure we're certain there's no conflict.
Very good. Thank you for allaying my concerns about that. And, you know, again, I apologize because I wasn't on council at the time that this whole thing got started, a year, years ago, rather. Was the idea of improving bike and pedestrian safety on the San Antonio overpass considered as a viable, much cheaper alternative by the city or by the city in partnership with other agencies? I mean, this is far off the question of which of these we pick, but I think it's a relevant question because we're looking again for improving access, doing it not terribly expensively. I understand that the existing bridge at San Antonio is not adequate for bike and pedestrian safety, but I was just curious if there had been really discussion about that in the past.
I'm hearing from our project manager who worked on the feasibility study that that didn't rise to one of the things we considered in the study.
I don't recall any discussion over the past four or five years in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss.
So Molly, I should know this answer by now. If we do not vote tonight and we do get additional information that the, that the council can contemplate, do we again hear from the public? Not that I don't like hearing from the public. It's, I need to know, do we need to do another round if we get more information?
Yes, you do.
So that's significant. One of my concerns tonight is, this was a project that Mayor Holman really was, in many ways, responsible for and really cared a great deal about. She's talked to me about it so many times, and I feel troubled that we're thinking of voting tonight with her not being here and realizing that she is sick, of course, and couldn't be here. It still bothers me, and I'm trying to think of a way that we could continue our own contemplations but vote at another time, since even though I'd love to get started on this, it's been, it certainly has been four or five years by now. Give me some of your thoughts on that from the group down here.
Well, Councilmember, we certainly appreciate the perspective about the inclusion of the mayor in this regard. It does seem to me that that would involve another meeting, and I was asking the city attorney, wouldn't that kick in the taking new public comment when a council, another council member is back and it's before you several weeks from now? And then it would be hard for me to think, knowing us, if we were to do that anyway, that we wouldn't be in a situation where we would be bringing back some additional information for you. I think if you, if it was a month before we came back, you would definitely want us to...
Okay, in that case, then I think we should plow ahead. I have two concerns, some of which the previous two speakers have talked about. One is the safety issue. Could we just circle back to that again for a minute, Brad, the safety issue? Because what I'm hearing is, and I'm looking up here at A, which is clearly a divided, it's divide, you had your bikes on one side and you've got walkers on the other side, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the other one is all in one.
Right.
And yet, what we're hearing is one is just as safe as the other. And yet, I'm still not convinced of that, because it would seem to me that, as though if I'm running or walking on one side, I would far prefer the bikes be on the far side, to be quite honest. And unless there's something I missed there, as concerned as I am about birds, and I think Penny, among others, were very persuasive, but the gentleman who came up and said to us, "The most important thing for me is the safety of my kids," was very persuasive. And so I find myself torn in this, but I think at the same, at the same time, we really should push forward. So why don't we see where we are? Let's try, let's try moving this forward and see if we, if we get anywhere. Brad, you wanted to make a comment?
Well, just to the point you were just making, that was discussed a lot during the jury competition and some of the boards and commissions, that there was support for the vertical separation.
Versus the other one. So I'm going to see where we are on this, and even though I know those who are still left tonight would prefer C, I am going to move the, and we're calling it, I don't want to give it the wrong name, it's the HNTB. That's, that is number A. I don't want to misstate them. And the other one is Moffett and Nichols. And I'm going to move that in just a second. So why don't you think, if anyone wants to second it, and I'm going to tell you why I'm moving it forward. I think that if we wait any longer tonight, we are going to really, as City Manager has just said, run into considerable delays, and I, just as soon, we don't do that, we've waited so long for this. But because I'm concerned about the safety aspect of it, and yet at the same time, I think what Judith Wasserman said was, either one of these would be a spectacular bridge. So I'm going to try moving that first, and it isn't because I'm absolutely committed to it, but I'd like to see where we are on this. So I am moving number A, which would be the HNTB design that was put forward. I'd say that tells us a lot, doesn't it?
No second.
If there's no second, then let me withdraw my motion.
We withdrew it for you.
Yes, you did.
Councilmember Burn.
So we're not just at the question point, it sounds like, we're at the questions and comments and motions and everything else? Great, thanks. So I guess following up on Councilmember Niss's comments, let's talk a little bit more about the safety issue. So, and I'll ask the Moffett-Nichols folks, one of the gentlemen mentioned a bridge in Berkeley that he's built, and that, you mentioned the results are very successful, and so I guess my question is, what does that mean? What does very successful mean? You know, how would it, are there comparisons you can make between that bridge, which I understand there is some separation between the bicyclists and the pedestrians? It's not a full separation in terms of two different lanes, but there is separation in height between the two, the two different modes. Have there, I mean, how long is the Berkeley Bridge? How long ago was it built? And, you know, have there been major accidents between bicyclists and pedestrians or bicyclists and slower bicyclists on that bridge?
I'm not aware of any accidents on that bridge. I live less than a mile from it, and I'm very tied in and connected, shall I say, to the local bicycle community. I have another business that is focused on bicycles, so I'm very, I would know. There are completely separate lanes. It's the same device that we use throughout all of our streets to separate cars from pedestrians. It's called a sidewalk, and it is perceived as a sidewalk. The only difference between the sidewalk on the Berkeley Bike Bridge and the sidewalk on a regular street is that on a regular street, most of the time, there are vertical six-inch curbs. On the Berkeley Bike Bridge, I believe it was a two-and-a-half-inch sloped angled curb, so that if a bicyclist were to lose control, they would not hit a vertical edge. It's not to encourage them to ride up on that angled curb, but it's to provide additional measure of safety should they happen to do that. I use that bridge almost on a daily basis, and I see people very happy with the fact that we pushed so, so hard, what is this now, 18 years ago, to actually do something that innovative and make something that wide. It was a big fight to get that much width and to get true positive mode separation as well as gentle ramp slopes. That was not the state of the art at the time.
Okay, thank you. Question for, it looks like the city manager might have a comment before I switch gears. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just weigh in. Actually, I don't know if you recognize me. I was city manager in Berkeley when you...
Blame him.
...selected the bridge.
Blame him for everything.
And did a lot of the work, and obviously, between Berkeley and Palo Alto, my hair's a lot whiter now than it was 18 years ago. I knew the bridge well. This is not based on any science, and I've probably run over it 100-plus times going down to Caesar Chavez Park and from Aquatic Park. I would say this, that, you know, I never encountered any issues with the design of the bridge. I'm just speaking from my own experience. And again, I'm just drawing on experience, so my own sense is the demographic profile of the users of our bridge might be a bit different than the users of the Berkeley Bridge. I'm just seeing lots of multi-generational and lots of kids potentially on our bridge, and it does strike me that the idea of a separation would be an advantage that you have in A. That being said, I mean, my own experience was that, was that the width of the bridge does mitigate the kind of, you know, mingling. But again, there have been very few times I've ever been on that bridge unless there was a protest going on, which was common, where it's really crowded, that sort of thing.
Thank you. And Ms. Wasserman, a question. You mentioned earlier that you felt like you could pretty much throw a dart at a board and hit any three of these and get a good result, which I'm inclined to agree with you. What, you know, this, the safety concern, is that a fatal flaw, in your opinion or in the opinion of the jury, with the... in the opinion of the jury, with the Moffett and Nichol? Brad, I can't remember if it was, who said use Moffett and Nichol and HNTB? I'm going to respect that. I'm going to use the names you guys want, even if it won't make any sense to anybody else, so. It was kind of a joke, it fell flat.
I don't think that those safety concerns rose to the level of the decision. I mean, it had some impact on the decision, but I think, I think that we were, that the constructibility and the aesthetics pushed us more towards the HNTB team.
Thank you. And also, thank you for everything that the jury did in getting to this process. So, a couple of questions, I guess, just random questions that came up over the past couple of weeks and during the presentation. The metal discs that are meant to deter birds from hitting the wires, I think it might have been when the gentleman had one here, or maybe it was on a video, where it sounded like it makes noise. Will that make noise? And how much noise, especially as weather kind of affects the metal as they move around?
Ned Khan, I'm the artist. It's mostly silent. There's a subtle sound. When it's extremely windy out, it'll make some sound. I would say, kind of with the traffic noise, it would be an almost indetectable sound.
Okay. So it's, but then I'm trying to think of, you know, if we have 100 of them or a couple hundred of them and they're all...
Yeah, it's a very reasonable question. I've done installations on hospitals and installations on residential units, and we can actually design it to be entirely silent if noise is an issue.
Thank you. And while I've got you, one more question. At night, would there be, you know, the reflection from traffic lights, from lights from cars? Would those be, would those rays high enough, I guess, to reflect off of these reflectors and cause an impact?
Well, a number of things I want to point out. One is that the surface reflectivity is entirely adjustable. We can do anything from, you know, a very shiny, almost mirror finish to a very matte, subdued finish. And basically, based on the project and the context, we've done a whole range. I have 60 installations all over the world, some dating back 20 years, and many of them are in places where there's lots of vehicular traffic. Some are visible from the 101 freeway, and there's never been any accidents, even with some with very reflective surfaces. The key is it's a highly fragmented surface, so they're reflecting light, but they're reflecting small amounts of light compared to even just the light reflecting off of the windshield of a car next to you or rearview mirrors, you know, it's a tiny fraction of that light. It's a tiny fraction of the light reflecting off of a normal glass building.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sure.
I believe your question is about, are they visible at night? Is that the intent?
Or would they reflect, you know, would light from cars reflect off them?
Yeah, and so, and you understand the function of the UV element?
Not, not as much as you think I do, apparently.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, just, this is a standard in the bird diverters, and it's an element that absorbs light during the day and emits it at night. So for bats and for migrating birds at night, they're able to image the discs.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we've talked a lot about the space, which was a question of mine, the width of the path. Northbound access on the west side, I see, well, I think I know the answer to this, but we heard from the HNTB team that there would be northbound access. Is there also northbound access for the Moffett and Nichol design on the west side of the highway?
Yes, there's a set of, a swooping set of stairs. As the Google representative mentioned, they favored that access. We would be happy to put in a bike rail as somebody else requested.
That was going to be another question of mine, which I thought was a pretty neat idea, so that's possible also?
Of course.
Great. And I imagine you guys, would that be possible with your rail on the north side? Oh, I guess your rail would already be a path, you mentioned, so that answers that. So let's, let me ask staff quickly about the process. When we, because I don't remember all the details, and I reread back through the staff report real quick and didn't see it mentioned, but when we went through this process, we were pretty forthright with everybody involved, I'm assuming, that we would go through this process, a jury would deliberate and make a decision on what they thought was best, and then it would come to council, correct? So that was, we didn't hide the ball. This isn't a surprise to any applicants, shouldn't be a surprise to the public, it's not a surprise to the jury. Everybody understood that this was the process that we would go through.
That's correct.
Okay, and that we wouldn't automatically take the decision that the jury made?
Also correct.
Okay, thank you. And let me expound upon that just a little bit. I mean, you know, we as elected, I, I guess, would never cede that total authority to anybody else. I mean, that's, that's not, I wouldn't have voted for the jury process if that was built into it. That doesn't strike me as the right thing for an elected body to do, especially with a project of this magnitude in this sensitive of an area in our community. So, you know, I do like all three designs. I think we haven't talked at all about the kayak design. I even like the kayak design. I know fully that it's way too out there for my community, but I liked it. I think both the Moffett and Nichol and the HNTB projects could easily fit into Palo Alto. I think they are both, you know, fantastic designs that accomplish what we're trying to achieve. I think that for this area, the Moffett and Nichol design, the lower-profile design, fits better. I think it's more kind of respectful, it's low-profile, I think, is more respectful and fits better in the, in the kind of natural environment that we have there. I think, I think functionally, it works well. I like the way it looks. I like the low profile. I like that there's less risk to damaging birds and, you know, bird safety. And so that, you know, at this stage, I know not everyone's spoken, but at this stage, that's the design that I'm inclined to support.
You can make a motion.
Sure. I'll move that council approve the Moffett and Nichol Design C for the bike bridge.
I'll even second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Berman, seconded by Councilmember Filseth.
I think I've spoken enough to it.
Councilmember Filseth, you want to talk to your second?
Yeah, so I agree a lot with Councilmember Berman here. I think both A and C are beautiful bridges, right? I've been over the Happy Halla Zoo Bridge many times. It's a nice bridge. Mary Street Bridge looks good, too. But in the long run, I think Palo Altons, in the long run, I think Palo Altons will be happier with the Moffett and Nichol Bridge than with the other one. The Arch Bridge is more dramatic, and you can see how it would appeal from an architectural perspective. It makes a stronger statement, and without, without surrounding context, it's the more interesting of the two. But we have context. The bridge is going to go in the Baylands and what counts as the whole context. And I think one of the things we're seeing is, we all know how valuable land is in the Bay Area. Our neighboring cities are rushing like crazy to infill their own Bay Shore real estate with architecturally striking corporate campuses and dense surrounding development and so forth. I think in 20 or 30 years, what's going to be really distinctive in this part of Palo Alto is not architecture, but the absence of it. What's unique here is going to be our open space and natural environment, and when the rest of the 101 corridor is completely full, our natural landscape will be more dramatic and iconic than anything you can make out of glass and steel. And I think the framers of design contest got it right when they asked for concepts that focused on extending the Baylands preserve experience, but not drawing your attention away from it. The gem here is the Baylands, not the bridge itself. I think C is more consistent with that, and that's why I support it.
Councilmember DuBois.
You know, this late hour, I think other people have made a lot of the points that I want to make. I think it, this kind of boils down to whether you think the bridge should be the landmark or the Baylands, and I tend to favor the Baylands.
Okay, I have no other lights. Councilmember Berman.
Yes, although I also think that C is more context-appropriate for the Baylands. I think both designs are truly exceptional. And I was not sure I was ready to support my own personal preferences at this time and really wanted to have the information on the bird safety being the decisive factor for myself. We are, we do have that choice against, against the issue of whether we move forward at this time and frankly, whether there's a majority of the council that's clear enough in their preference on the other factors, that they don't feel the need to have the bird safety be the decisive one. So I'm going to go ahead and support the motion, although I think I would have been more inclined to have the independent analysis on the bird safety before making this decision.
Yeah, I would just make a brief comment. I think the bird safety is a, is a big issue, but I don't think it's the most important one for me. The place is that we're trying to, we are proud of the Baylands, that it is one of the three or at most four spots on the highway, the Bay Shore Highway between San Jose and San Francisco, where you actually have a full view of the Baylands and beyond. And that is a valuable resource. And I think the Tower Arch Bridge is a distraction from the openness that the Bayland presents to the community by bringing you back to the roadway, where it becomes just a distinction rather than a gateway to what the Baylands is. So I'll be supporting the motion. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Just looking at the direction we're going in here, is one of the questions that you did raise was the cost issue, and, you know, if this does pass, as City Manager, I would like to feel that we've done a little more preliminary research before we get into the spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to just get a sense that, you know, here's one, this is the first time this actual design's being deployed, as mentioned by the proponents, and, you know, some potential question about the costs. And it's not to dissuade the direction at all, but just to say to the council that I want to pursue with the staff if we've got any information, that we can come back. Clearly, managing the costs is an important thing on this, or if it was Project A also.
Councilmember Berman, it's your motion.
I have no problem with doing more due diligence to make sure it's actually a feasible design.
Do you want to put a time-sensitive on that?
Sure. Sorry, was there a specific suggestion, or?
I mean, I think we can do that pretty quickly.
We can do that, bring it back when we bring the contract back.
Okay. So Mike says when we bring the actual contract back, we could have that report also.
Okay. Then do we feel like we need, so should I change this to reflect that staff is going to do more due diligence, or if you're bringing it back with the contract, is that sufficient?
Yeah, I think that's sufficient.
Okay. If that's, yeah.
Good. I see no other lights, so let's vote on the board. And that passes seven to nothing.
Vice Mayor, may I have a...
Yes.
I'd just like to say that there, as a result of this, there may be misgivings as to whether the design process really served a valuable purpose, and I would say it very definitely did. We got at least two exceptional designs out of this. And that, in the end, we had a context-sensitive solution that was selected slightly above another design that is a truly exceptional architectural design. But I think the community was provided two exceptional designs, and I think that the process in that sense did work very well, and this will benefit the community greatly over a, what we might have had as an alternative absent this process.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, I thought the discussion tonight was very good and helpful for everyone concerned. Okay, that, the next item on the agenda is a closed session, where we're going to talk about public appointment involving the city clerk.
What about, uh, we're here for our city fairs.
Oh, okay. Councilmember questions and comments?
You know...
I see none.
You have a...
Greg.
I have a...
So, we need a motion to go into closed session on public employment on the city clerk.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Councilmember Niss, seconded by Councilmember Walbach. Any discussion? All in favor?
Do you want to say what? You want to go to closed session?
Are you going to vote?
What we're going to?
Going to closed session.
Sure.
Okay, do we have a vote?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously.
I hope they do.
And it was the HMTB which got the nod of the dish to the Baylands.